All right, welcome back everyone. Good afternoon. We're back live with the Orange County Board of County Commission meeting of April the 9th, 2024. We're at the point on our agenda where we're going to have a discussion by county administration regarding the transportation sales tax. And we're going to start off with the county administrator, Mr. Byron Brooks. And with that, Mr. Brooks, you recognize?
Thank you, Mayor Demmings. Good afternoon, everyone. So this is the final work session on this topic of the transportation sales tax. This is quite an extensive work session, so forewarning you as well, but it is the time, the point in which we need to go in those details because this is the last meeting before you have to make a decision regarding a public hearing on April 23rd. So today, we will hit these topics. After the introduction, Carol Burkett will speak about the community re-engagement. Luis Nuevez Ruiz will give the economic impact analysis. Lyncs CEO Tiffany Homer Hawkins will provide the update with respect to the needs list for Lyncs, and Brett Blackadar will give the needs list of the county and municipalities. Brett will then proceed and discuss the project delivery approach. I will come back and talk about oversight and accountability. Whitney Evers will review the legal documents and approvals needed today, and then we'll conclude with next steps in summary. Just a reminder, a quick reminder, as you recall, the mayor established these work sessions specifically for the purpose of engaging this board in a decision of whether or not to advance the referendum to the ballot in 2024. So these have been listening sessions. These have been designed to get your input and your thoughts, your ideas, with the intent of this board indicating if you still, if you have that interest and want to advance this item. And so, as part of that, an important step is the April 23rd public hearing. If the board wants to conduct the public hearing, then we have to advertise the ordinance, and in doing so, it is important today that the board establish the rate and duration of the sales tax so that it can be included in the ordinance that has to be advertised. And obviously, you'll hear more about that later. And just a quick recap from the last work session on March 26th, we just captured various comments, feedback, discussions that the board, from the board during that day through that session. Those matters that did have specific follow-up for us will be covered today. You'll hear more on some of these areas that we'll dive into based upon that feedback or comments that the board made at that last work session. But most notably was that the board, the majority of the board expressed a desire to continue the community dialogue, the community meetings, and expressed an interest to continue this discussion, hence, we're back here today for work session number three. And with that, I am going to give the podium to Carol Burkett to update you on community re-engagement. She will be followed by Luis Nuevez Ruiz, then Tiffany Homer Hawkins, and then Brett Blackadar.
Thank you, Byron. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, and Comptrollers. It's my pleasure to be here to write an update on our community re-engagement efforts for transportation. To date, we have held six transportation community meetings, and during those meetings, about 200 comments were received from our residents. And we have placed those in five broad categories as I get into the presentation, but just to go over those, it was public transportation, pedestrian and bike safety, technology, traffic signals, and streetlights, roads, and then other, which just for all other general comments. You should have in front of you an updated transportation community meeting recap. I've also sent that electronically, which you'll see all the comments. We can't list all those on the slides today, but you'll see all those comments. So as we get into the first one, we kicked off transportation community meetings in District Four with Commissioner Gomez Gordero holding her meeting on March 21st. We had approximately 45 residents attend that meeting in Avalon. And some of the comments, just to highlight a few in public transportation, we heard from residents that wanted more awareness on public transportation safety, more reliable transit. We also heard on pedestrian and bike safety, better availability, and roads that were better for our bicyclists. And for technology and traffic, really focusing on that new technology and how that can better our transportation and transit system. Roads, we did hear from one resident who talked about Avalon Park and Colonial and the congestion on that road. And some of those other comments included, what does one cent cost per year, and what happens if we do nothing? As we move forward, District Three, Commissioner Uribe's transportation community meeting was held on March 25th, and we had approximately 38 residents in attendance. That was at our IFAS Corporate Extension Center. As you can see, several comments were provided by our residents, and just starting again with public transportation, residents said funds should be used for transit. Under bike and pedestrian safety, that one resident said they would support the sales tax increase if it would go to bicycle safety. Technology, again, advanced technology systems that could be used to better our transportation and transit, and then also heard from a resident about a traffic light need at Highway 50 and Fort Christmas. Under roads, we heard people say that we'd have to pay extra for tolls on our roads. And then another, under other comments, explain what happens if the tax doesn't pass, and wanted to see if a half-cent sales tax could be considered since Orange County Public Schools has a tax going on the ballot. And then the next meeting was Mayor Demmings' meeting that was held on March 27. This transportation meeting was at Lyncs Central Station. We had about 40 attendees. And some of the public input and comments we heard from public transportation and transit, talking about how transportation and planning are tied together, and that neighbors use mobility scooters as adults get older and they need to have those options available. We also heard on the bike and pedestrian safety that they support a penny for pedestrian safety, and as you heard this morning, about removing car culture and parking mandates from some of our residents that spoke during public comment. On the roads section, we heard from residents that said no more widening roads, and that bike lanes were not well-defined. And on the other section, just some of those general comments, more bike trails were needed, and a dedicated funding source for transportation. On April 1st, Commissioner Wilson held her transportation community meeting at Windermere High School in their gymnasium with approximately 45 attendees, and some of those comments that we heard, public transportation need about 300 buses for our growing Orange County population. Pedestrian safety, residents said that it was bad, and about one in four are impacted. We also heard about Horizon West, it was designed to walk and bike, but did not have streetlights. On the technology side, traffic signals were not operating adequately in South Orange County. We also heard from residents about widening roads doesn't help, we need functional roads, and mentioned John Young Parkway and OBT turn lanes. And then on the other, we heard from a resident who said do not pass the sales tax, and another resident that said the meetings were too far away, took about 30 minutes to drive there. As we proceed, District Five, transportation community meeting was held on April 2nd, and this was at our Orange County Golden Rod Recreation Center with about 21 attendees present. Under public transit, we heard, transportation, we heard free transit, based on income earnings, that young people need better access to bus transportation. Under pedestrian and bicycle safety, more pedestrian transit options. And under technology, traffic signals, and streetlights, we heard that traffic lights at John Young Parkway are not in sync and need better light coordination at certain areas on Alafaya. From the roads aside, said not feeling safe crossing the street, one resident commented, and widening roads were not a good solution. And then, under those general comments, some good feedback, thank you for listening. Can we discuss a floor for the tax to give our low-wage earners a break? And then, on April 3rd, Commissioner Scott held his transportation community meeting, and this was at the Orange County Multicultural Center with about 25 attendees present. We received comments and input regarding, again, transportation. Buses need to come more often were some of the concerns we heard, more reliability, and cheaper transit options. We also heard under pedestrian safety and bicycle accelerated transportation safety plan, and wanted to know how those dollars were spent in District Six. Again, we heard about technology and how we could use that better, even to communicate about our meetings. And then other, from comments of taxes a burden, and didn't want it on the ballot, to needing to expand our transportation options. So we have one more, community transportation meeting scheduled in District Two, and this will be on April 18th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM, at Wakaba High School Media Center. So we do have that on all of our, on the county webpage, as well as on our social media sites. And a new option that we're looking at is proposing a transportation community webinar. As I mentioned, we heard a couple of residents talk about just not being able to get there. Could there be another option? So we're looking at April 22nd. We will get you that information by the end of the week, so we can all promote that and hopefully get some good attendance where people can get online and give us their comments and feedback. So I want to spend the next few minutes providing you an update on the transportation survey. As of last night, we had 12,000, sorry, 12,000, a little ahead of myself, 1,203 surveys, not quite to 12,000, and we had about 500 comments that were listed on the survey. And I just wanted to highlight, one of the first questions was, what are your current transportation challenges? And they could choose all that apply. Not surprising, 80% said traffic congestion, that was very similar to the last survey. Commute time, 37% weighed in on that, and 34% unsafe walking and/or biking conditions. Hours of operation and frequency of Sun Rail, 33% talked about that, and then 30% said one of their challenges was the cost of commute, and as we know, that's purchase of a car, gas, or public transit. The next question I wanted to share with you is, what do you believe are the top priorities for improving transportation in Orange County? Again, to choose your top five, building a mass transit system, very similar to what we heard in the previous survey data. More frequent survey and access, and that's 44% of our residents said that. 41% talked about increasing pedestrian safety, 40% right there following that was improving our traffic signal timing, and we did hear that at our community meetings. And then 36% said widening existing roads. And taking a little further look into our transportation, I wanted to share with you the question on how often do you use the Lyncs bus service? About 14% use it occasionally, 79% have not used it. But if you are currently a user or would like to use it, which of the following would be important to you? Service connecting to Sun Rail, we heard some of those comments at their community meetings. 38% said increasing access to more places. 36% weighed in saying convenient Lyncs bus stops and routes, and 35% that increased frequency, and 34% service home, from home to the airport. And the same question, just looking at our Sun Rail system, how often do you use that on average? A little higher than Lyncs, about 27% said occasionally, 57% that have not used it. But if you are a current user or would like to use the Sun Rail system, which would be, which of the following things would be important to you? Evening and weekend service came in at 66%. Again, we heard comments at our community meetings in reference to that. 55% said increased frequency and access to more places. Service from home to airport was another one at 51%. That was something that residents would like to see. And the east-west route came in at 45%. And then 41% of respondents said longer service hours. These are some of the new questions. I just wanted to highlight a few of these that we asked this time, is how important is the Citizens Oversight Committee's review of the transportation sales tax projects? And as you can see, 77% said important, very important on this question. With Bright Line launching last year, we asked, how have you ridden on the Bright Line train to South Florida? And about 29% said they did. And then, would you utilize Sun Rail if it went directly to the airport/Bright Line Station? And as you can see, overwhelmingly, 83% said that they would use that. So just as I conclude my portion of the presentation, a friendly reminder, if you have not taken the survey, we are asking for your comments, your suggestions. Please fill out that survey, five minutes of your time, and it gives us such valuable information that we can pass on to our transportation team. Again, ocfl.net/transportation, and you can also find the next community meeting, which is in District Two, on April 18th at 6:00 PM. It's now my pleasure to turn the presentation over to Luis Nuevez Ruiz with East Central Florida Regional Planning Council.
Before I start, I would like to thank Commissioners Uribe and Monilla for the service to the Planning Council. Again, my name is Luis Nuevez Ruiz. I'm the Director of Economic Development for the Central Florida Regional Planning Council, and I was the person responsible for doing the economic impact analysis. So why are we here? We're here right now because we are in a crux. Orange County is one of the most successful counties in the whole United States when it comes to economic development. With that additional economic development, though, there's going to come some burdens because people are going to be moving here. We're talking about over 200,000 people, that's the net gain of residents we have every year. By 2040, we think it's almost going to be about $400,000. So what happens with that? When we have this conversation about whether we don't sell stacks or we don't want to sell stacks, one thing keeps forgotten, is that the status quo costs money too. The way we're doing things, it might be the way we've been doing it for 20 years, doesn't mean that they don't cost money. According to the Transit Transportation Institute, Orange County commuters spend about 61 hours stuck in traffic every year. I have this vantage point from my office, as I get to see I-4 every day, and I play these games, like how is I-4 doing between 2:00 and 6:00 PM? And it's really interesting because it always gets clocked exactly where they need to actually get the East and West Expressway. These are commuters going to District One, District Four, District Five, and we just spent $2.6 billion expanding the road. So when it comes, this congestion is going to keep increasing our transportation costs. Right now, the typical Orange County household is spending 24% of their budget on transportation. It's terrible, but you know, the actual amount is between 16 and 18%, should be actually a status quo. As congestion gets higher, we're going to be spending much more of our money in transportation. That's money that could be used to support local businesses, go to restaurants, go to the movies. So certainly, it's going to be very limited. But the residents that get most affected are low-income earners. And I've heard the whole thing that the sales tax is very aggressive, and that's understandable, but when we don't really talk about, what is the cost of not having a good transportation system is costing our low-income residents? We need a, there was a story released during COVID, it's an app called transientapp.com, where they actually, were actually kind of like doing a census of who was actually riding the bus during COVID. It was those essential workers. You have them here, it's food preparation, maintenance, healthcare support, practitioners and sales. So we used some data to try to correlate, how did that workforce actually look in Orange County? And what we found, two things. One, it's heavily female, and it's heavily led by people of color. In Orange County alone, not counting DMPR workers, which are not part of the regional experiment, 30% of the county's workforce is within these age groups, so within those groups. So what we're telling these people is one of two things. You either take a bus, or you take transit that may be inefficient, or you actually spent like a lot of our 24%, of your budget or more, paying for a car. I myself, I've rarely used my car, I just spent $1,500 trying to like do a fix, and I'm like upper-income, and it still did a whole of my budget. So what does having an ineffective transit system do to our population? It does a lot. So what we tried to do, we tried to do two things, how we're going to measure that. We did what is the first scenario, is what is called a do-nothing scenario. The idea here is that we decide that we are not going to take this forward, or residents decide that we are not going to vote for this. So what happens here is that we think they're going to be, this is going to be decreases in productivity because workers will have a much harder time to get where they need to go. We're also going to have the increases in what the amount of money that people spend on transportation because of that decision. So that and a couple more things, what we did is what we found out that about, and again, it's not that you're going to lose 13,000 jobs every year, this is an average, is that when you look at what is the forecast, we have a forecast that goes up to 2060, we are going to be creating 13,000 jobs less than what the forecast had for those previous 20 years. But what you see, what we actually do, whether we do the half penny sales tax, the penny sales tax, we actually see both an increasing jobs, we're talking within 4,600 and 7,600 positions, 4 billion extra in sales, and 1 billion in personal income, you're paying sales tax, and the new investment in infrastructure actually is going to add to the county's gross domestic product annually. And let me explain something. When people see this type of like tools, they think that, well, if you do a half penny sales tax, and you are paying sales tax, the difference should be double. That's not how it works. How these models work is that they're actually equations that at some point, the Orange County economist is going to say, this is how much I'm going to be able to produce before sending money to other parts of the region. So that's why you don't have the 4698, they not become like 8200 jobs with a penny sales tax. But you see that, whether you decide to have penny sales tax or a penny sales tax, you are going to see positive economic outcomes. And again, it's important that, understanding that not doing anything is actually going to bring some costs, and those costs are going to be increasing, and doing anything, something will actually may be able to create some new economic activity. This is the end of my presentation. If there are any questions, I'm going to be available here for a couple of minutes, so you let me know.
Luis, when you said doing nothing could result in 13,281 fewer jobs than projected, that is jobs projected, is that an annual figure, or that?
Everything that I show you here are averages for the next 20, 30 years.
So that would be 13,000 fewer jobs?
Yes.
Over 20 years?
Yeah, and the assumption here was that because, there are two things that are happening here. One, we decrease the amount of productivity in our workers, just because that's the best way to measure, measure this type of tax. Like, if you're not able, last year was really, last time we did this, we had some really interesting models, saying how long it took people to get to certain places. I had, I really loved the story years ago that they had about the lady who spent seven hours on the bus to be able to get her job. Like, I worked for seven hours myself, so I couldn't see myself seven hours just trying to get somewhere. The value of time for these people is very important too. Yeah, we see these sales stacks as dollars and cents, but the reality is, we're also talking about the opportunity cost we're providing people. You don't have to take transit if you don't want it, but I'm giving you the option to take transit, and for some people like me, it's going to work. I take Sun Rail every day, leads me right straight in front of the building, and I just walk like five minutes. That's a privilege that I have, and that's a privilege that I will have love for all the residents from District One, Two, Four, Five to have, because that's a very, I'm able to do so many things with my time, and we need to take that into account when we're evaluating whether we're going to send this to vote or not.
Okay, thanks. We're going to get through all the presentations, and then we'll come back to the Q and A. Okay, all right, next.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, Comptrollers. Tiffany Homler Hawkins with Lyncs, and I will be doing the transit portion of the project needs and cost estimates. We hear you, we have heard you. What we have heard over the last several weeks is what we have, we hear at our own public meetings, whether it's for a service change, a corridor project, or even bus shelters or transit centers, is that we need more frequent service on both bus and Sun Rail, a Sun Rail connection to OIA, as well as some type of rail extension from OIA to the Convention Center, and then on to the west towards Tampa. And that will be supported by those improvements with new regional express routes to major And again, all of these routes and introduction of new services will require bus stops and infrastructure improvements for those routes. So this is, this map is a graphic representation of what those improvements would look like and how they are all connected to each other. This map has been shown previously, not only with the Orange County Transit Plan, but throughout our region, with our two other counties that we do serve. The one, a couple of the, it's hard to kind of show what the bus frequency would look like, but you all have seen our bus frequency triangle in previous presentations, where 50% of the bus routes in Orange County are currently at 60-minute headways or more, headways frequency. We literally flipped that triangle on its head and changed that to almost 50% of the bus routes will go to 15-minute frequency or less. If these... We miss in acknowledging that with the introduction of these services, we will also be providing pair-transit enhancements for these routes. And these services are for our most vulnerable in our community, that they provide medical lifelines, job training opportunities, and education. Next, I'll go through some of the specifics of what is in the plan on, for some of these major investments. You heard Carol talk about it, one of the most frequent criticisms of Sun Rail is that it doesn't run nearly enough on nights and weekends, or more often in peak service during the weekdays. And so this plan anticipates 15-minute service in the peak, 30-minute off-peak, 60-minute headways frequency on the weekends. It also proposes a new extension to the airport, and part of that extension is being studied by the FDOT in concert with the Sunshine Corridor, which I'll talk about in just a few minutes. And as, again, with any extension of Sun Rail, that will include new rail stations for that infrastructure support for that, the Sun Rail. Next, you have heard about these roads at Metro Plan and through other agencies. These are counties, or these are roadways throughout Orange County that you and I drive on every day, that the Lyncs buses use every single day, and have some level of congestion on them. They have also had some various level of transit study done on them throughout my 20 years of experience with Lyncs, to determine the feasibility of moving not just vehicles through that corridor, but people through the corridor. And so, these high-capacity priority transit corridors would operate at about 10-minute frequency, and the amenities, again, those would need stations, bike ped improvements, as well as amenities such as display monitors to, for folks, so that it is just naturally intuitive that those, those routes are coming at 10-minute frequency. And again, it supports Vision 2050 Plan. The next proposals would be the regional express routes. These are direct-connect routes between key regional activity centers, places of employment, colleges, shopping centers, that would be limited stop, and it's designed to move passengers quickly throughout the region. For example, we heard a story during, during one of the community meetings... For example, we heard a story during, during one of the community meetings about interns working at Disney and living over by UCF, and Monday through Saturday, they do not have transportation issues, but on Sunday, because the service ends early on Sunday, they have challenges getting back to the campus area where they do live. And so these, these routes would use our limited-access roadways, the I-4 Express, the Turnpike, and the Central Florida Expressway facilities. And again, these would operate seven days a week at thirty-minute frequency and for the majority of the day. And again, with the infrastructure improvements needed for this, there would be park-and-ride facilities that would be proposed for this service expansion. And again, all of these improvements require vehicles for the expanded service. Orange County's bus fleet would grow over the twenty-year period by two hundred and forty-one buses. Currently, Lynx is at three hundred buses for the three-county area that we do serve. All of the vehicles are proposed to be low or no emission, and there would be train sets that would be needed by twenty-eight trains to accommodate the expansion of the Sun Rail service and to the airport. And again, so I wanna highlight some of the critical assumptions in developing this plan. This plan pulls together a variety of transit studies that have been done over many years at Lynx based on the requests that we do get. And it, the assumptions were made so that we could show the possibilities of what could be done with one cent at twenty years. And the first is that the sales tax would replace the current Orange County and City of Orlando contributions to Lynx, not only for the bus service, but for the upcoming Sun Rail operating contributions that the locals will be taking on. And currently, that amount is about ninety-eight million dollars a year. The second assumption is that, again, it, you would be picking up, you, the sales tax would pick up the Sun Rail's contributions for Winter Park and Maitland, as well as the City of Orlando. The improvements for Sun Rail nights and weekend is also included in this assumption. And why it's important to talk about the assumptions? The financial feasibility of a model like this relies a lot on contributions from federal funding and the Federal Transit Administration for the projects that Lynx would be proposing. For the rating process that is prescribed for, to get federal funds, it requires a twenty-year operating commitment for local operations, so that the federal government would invest in that capital infrastructure, whether it be a, a New Starts or a Small Starts grant. And so the next few slides, as we get into the cost, will show why that's important. So again, I shared this with you all last time, that the cost estimates have increased by about eight percent since the twenty-two plan, and aging that to twenty-five dollars. And the federal and state funds are a significant part of that, and that is because you would be leveraging your local capital commitment to bring down those federal funds for this, this program. And the change in the estimates are, for the federal funds, are because some of the projects have shifted, and I will tell you what those are. Again, this is a breakdown by component of what it, what we were looking at in twenty-two versus twenty-five, and that the public-private partnership that was proposed in twenty-two is now the Sunshine Corridor replaced by that, and that is where those cost estimates are, are changed in that spreadsheet. So just a bit about how this would be implemented, and when we can expect projects to begin. The bus improvements are proposed to be in six phases throughout the twenty-year period. The corridor and rail projects are phased to maximize not only that bus feeder service, but also the potential for federal funding and phasing, so that it fits within Orange County's revenue projections. And here is a scenario, because we heard at the community meetings that maybe we should start with a lower amount, or a shorter term, or some variation of that. The chart shows what that impact would be. And what, using the forty-five percent transit share that had been proposed, a half penny ten-year, a half penny twenty-year, the, the purpose of this slide is really that bottom-line effort is to show whether these scenarios would be federal, eligible for federal funding for match, for major capital investments. And so, and this is based on not only our experience at Lynx, but throughout the nation as we move through the capital investment grant programs, New Starts, Small Starts. And just a couple of comments on the Sunshine Corridor being studied by the DOT. This is a joint project to get Sun Rail to the airport, as well as some rail alignment to the Convention Center and, and extension towards Tampa. And the, the DOT is wrapping up the transit concept in Alternatives Review, or the T-Car Study, and will be presented in the next few months. And this is what a draft timeline could look like. The DOT would wrap up their study, it would enter into a project development phase, which again is a prescribed federal funding process. And once it is approved, we could move into engineering and right-of-way acquisition phases. And then, again, the commitment from the locals, both on the capital and the operating side, would trigger a full funding grant agreement. Much was like done with Sun Rail, and then a two-year construction phase, and then revenue operations could begin in twenty thirty-four. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Blackadar for the county projects.
Thank you, Tiffany, and good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, and Comptroller Diner.
Good afternoon.
Is that Mayor?
Good afternoon.
Okay, afternoon. So we're gonna move on to the, the county projects, and thank you, Tiffany. One of the things that, you know, she said many times, is that these projects work together, even though we've shown forty-five, forty-five, ten, both the transit projects and the roadway projects work very well together, because most of the transit system is on the roadways. Most of the people that use the transit system, when they get on or off the bus, are bicyclists, pedestrians, and we need to make sure that we're designing for both systems together. So this is just a reminder from a slide we had last time, that safety is the, the center, and everything we do has a safety component, whether it's maintenance or mobility. Safety, safety is certainly at the center of everything we're proposing. So this was in the slide last time, and this is just a reminder that when we, when we updated the study, we looked at a shift in funding, more safety projects and fewer major roadway projects and widening projects, and we'll talk a little bit about that more later. So when we did the detailed project list, we wanted to break it down into three types of project lists. We had some good discussion at the meetings about different, how we identified different types of projects, and we use lots of words in, in meetings, and so we tried to, to break it down into these three projects, types of projects. The high-injury safety projects came from the recent Vision Zero efforts that Metro Plan Orlando is doing, and these are the projects, are, these are the roadways and corridors and intersections that are causing the most significant injuries. So when we looked at this, we decided we want to address these first, so you'll see that shown out there. And then bicycle pedestrian intersection safety projects, we're looking at all the corridors, in this case, there'd be corridors that we're not already doing widening projects for, and we would look at those to see what can we do to improve bicycle pedestrian safety, intersection safety, and operations. So even though we're not widening, we can look at either traffic signal technology, intersection improvements, something to help capacity without widening. And the last type of projects, you know, are roadway widening projects, this is actually adding lanes. Now, these products are also safety products, we're still gonna try to address as many as possible, but they are actually adding lanes. And when we started to look at the different scenarios, we prioritized them in this order, the high-injury safety, the bicycle pedestrian intersection, and the roadway widening. So you'll see those colors used here. So this was an overall summary of our safety projects, as you've seen before, just identify the big two pots of money under unfunded safety needs are those high-injury safety projects and the pedestrian bicycle and intersection safety projects. So there's close to two billion on those two. Some of the overall categories are ADA, lighting the network, and technology projects as well, which we didn't go specific detail, but those first two categories, we went into specific lists on. So this is just an overview of all of the safety and mobility widening projects, you'll see those categories shown up at the top, in the different colors we talked about before. We did separate out both the high-injury network, safety, and intersections. So when you go into the widening mobility projects, you'll see there's two categories, bridges and widening, so we have about two-point-three million shown, or billions, sorry, shown in widening projects there. And then this is our maintenance, this is everything else, this is, we didn't break this down, because this is district-wide resurfacing, or sorry, county-wide, all the districts resurfacing, mowing, landscaping, all those other things that make sure that we keep up a, a very safe existing infrastructure. So again, we talked a little bit this last time, the two, twenty-twenty-two, forty-seven percent safety projects, and then when you go into twenty-twenty-four, fifty-seven percent safety projects. So that's, one of the questions we had is what has changed? And we certainly shifted more of the funding scenarios towards safety projects than just widening projects. So we're gonna go through a lot of scenarios, and we're gonna show projects, and I do wanna say that the projects that we're gonna show per district are the same, based on the same list that we presented when Administrator Brooks set up the meetings with you, the briefings, that we did provide a list to you. What we did as an exercise since the last meeting was to look at the different scenarios, and so we broke the list up into different scenarios, and, and this is more for a visual purpose. Certainly, depending on the outcome of today's meeting, we can provide those lists to you, and certainly, we want your feedback on what you may feel are priorities, so we're not telling you these are priorities, but more from a visual point of view, to talk about list and what you would get for these different scenarios. So when we looked at a half-cent ten-year, both the half-cent ten-year and the half-cent twenty-year, you know, from a staff point of view, we suggested you really couldn't do widening projects with those if you prioritize it. So those two programs assume that we're not spending in the sales tax on widening, but we would still use some of the existing funding. We certainly have a lot of private-public partnerships, we have impact fees, proportionate share, other funding sources that would continue to go towards widening, but the sales tax would be used for safety only, so we would address high-injury safety projects, and then those pedestrian bicycle and intersection safety projects and maintenance. So the difference between ten-year and twenty-years is the amount of pedestrian bicycle and intersection safety projects we would be able to do. So we'd do the highest priority in ten years, then the second highest. And then when you go to the full cent, the difference is really you're adding those roadway widening projects. So under a ten-year full-cent scenario, you get the first ten years of prioritized projects, and then you get the second twenty years. So what I've done is put together, what we've done is put together a list by district, and I'm gonna go through these fairly fast, the point is to kind of show you visually the amount of projects that could be done under these different scenarios. And we'll start with District one, and here's an overall map, just as something to point out that, you know, even though you'll see a line here, that line may represent several segments, because we did break out the segments in the same way that we break out segments on our concurrency management system. So, you know, what you see there is, represents a lot more projects than just the lines show. So under the ten-year scenario, you'll see here, you have some high-injury safety projects, and then you get to do a significant amount of pedestrian safety projects under a ten-year half-cent. If you go to a twenty-year half-cent, you actually get a second page of, as well, I'm sorry, you, you get, you know, more on the pedestrian bicycle safety. Then when you're going to a ten-year full-cent, you'll see you go into a second page, and that's where you get the roadway widening projects as well. And then the twenty-year, you get all the highway injury, all the pedestrian safety, and then a significant amount of roadway widening projects. District two, one thing to note is the list, certainly the volume of lists are different, depending on how much, you know, what kind of county roads are in the district. Happens to be that District two has, have a significant amount of roadways that are in the city of Apopka, so there are fewer projects. But in this scenario, you have the high-injury network and the safety projects, pedestrian safety under a ten-year half-cent. Then if you went to a twenty-year half-cent, you would add a significant amount of more pedestrian bicycle and safety projects, and then you go into adding the widening on those one-cent scenarios, and then the twenty-year scenario has all the projects all together. District three, when you go into look at this, you have the same thing, you actually have a significant amount of high-injury safety projects within District three, probably one of the most, so you'll see a lot of those, and then you go into the pedestrian bicycle. The twenty-year adds more pedestrian bicycle and intersection projects, and then when you go into the, the ten-years and the twenty-year scenario, you add the roadway widening projects in those scenarios. District four actually has a lot of roads in there that have the city of Orlando, so you see they have some less total roads in here. You see the combination of the ten-year half-cents, and then the twenty-year half-cent projects. And then when you go into the, the one-cent, you get the roadway widening projects added on in that district. Five, you see the half-cent, the combination of the high-injury safety, significant amount of high-injury safety, pedestrian bicycle safety, then you start adding, the twenty-year gets you the full list, and then when you go to the one-cent, you get the additional roadway widening projects as well. And then finally, on District six, District six has a lot of projects that are high-injury safety projects, the most of any district, so you start looking at the list for ten-years half-cent, it actually goes on to two pages, and then the twenty-year half-cent, so full, two pages worth of projects. And then you look at the, the ten-year, and you'll see that there's only, you know, a little bit of roadway widening projects in District six, because that's kind of our most urban, dense district there, so we don't have a significant amount of roadway widening projects. So the list between the one-cent and the half-cent in District six are not that different because of that, the type of projects we are looking at. I know that was a lot, I apologize, but we wanted to show kind of the magnitude. So when we break it up by district, one of the questions we, you know, got asked when we were going out in this, you know, what type of, you know, what type of improvements are we getting? So this map kind of shows that, you see Lynx on the right-hand side, you see the county on the left-hand side, and then that county-wide number represents the amount of projects we're doing, that, we didn't break down by district, because they're roadway widening maintenance projects. But if you look at District one, you'll see that they had the most county projects, and then you see that District, you know, Districts five and six had fewer, but District six by far had the most transit. So it's kind of the character of the district is, you know, more transit for being the, in the center, where you have the more density, and then District one had more roadway projects because the sheer amount of county roadways in District one, and, you know, the newer type of developments there as well. So, you know, we talked about this, what has changed in twenty-twenty-two, certainly, we did a, a pretty big shift. We, the Vision Action Plan is in development, so as part of that, we're shifting away. When we started looking at some of the roadway projects that are, what a model would project for the future, some of those are very challenging due to cost impacts to right-of-way, so we tended to look at those and, and look at, those are corridors where transit could be added, safety improvements, but not necessarily widening. And then we're gonna talk next about an implementation plan. Last time, that was just started, we did a lot more work towards the end of, two years ago, to kind of develop that implementation plan using a general engineering contract, so we'll talk about that next. So there's just a reminder again, the breakdown between the twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-five, we showed this earlier, again, you know, more of a balance between safety and mobility. Again, the reminder for the two different funding sources, whether between a one-cent and a half-cent gets you seventy-five, seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine million, or the thirty-seven, three-hundred-and-seventy-nine-point-five million annually. So then we're gonna go into municipalities, and we did receive lists from eight of the municipalities, we had some coordination meetings with them and requested some project lists. And when you look at the breakdown here, those are the four scenarios, I know this is a lot, too, but you see the four scenarios and what each city would receive under those ten versus twenty, half, sorry, one-cent versus half-cent. And on the right-hand side, it, it does designate what we received. One of the cities, Winter Park, sent us a ten-year list, but the others represent a twenty-year list, and a few of the cities, we did not receive anything on. As of now, we haven't gone through in detail each of the city list, but we wanted just to represent what we had received. So that would represent the ten percent scenario of where those funds would go. So I wanna move into a little bit of project delivery, and one of the things, just to mention, I know this came up at some of the other work sessions, are, you know, who's involved in the delivery? So typically, we have a study, design, right-of-way construction, then an operations phase of a project. And really, public works tends to be, we tend to be the project managers, but there are a lot of other departments that are very critical in that process, and particularly procurement, business particularly procurement, business development, real estate management and legal. And we want to make sure that when we're talking about project delivery and we're talking about staffing, that we include those departments as well because certainly the staff in those departments will need to, will be affected by the amount of workload that could come out of one of these sales tax scenarios. So what we did is we put together an implementation plan. And this plan is for, assumes a one cent tax. It's, it's very scalable depending on what if we have, you know, a half cent, 10 year, 20 year. And also the way we did it is at the top of this chart is to look at the county staff and the bottom of the chart would be general engineering contract staff. And that's very scalable depending on what you need. If you have a bunch of design projects, you would have more design staff when you shift into construction or right away you could shift the amount of staff. So it's, it's very scalable depending on the needs. And generally that general engineering contracts, they're not the one actually doing the plans. They could do some smaller projects, but they're the ones managing the projects, keeping up with project schedules, reviewing plans, doing a lot of reporting, environmental compliance. And then when you get into the assisting with procurement, they consist in creating documents, assist in doing the business development side, certainly assist in the real estate management part of it for acquisition. So you'll see that. And when we go into, you know, a little close up here, again, that county staff there, we're certainly going to need county staff to oversee the general engineering contract. But again, a majority of these staff are going to be consultants, but you would have a very robust amount of new staff dedicated to make sure you can deliver a program, a program of this size. And Links as well, we're talking about the county here. Some of these projects we would assist Links on if they go to the full cent and they have like a bus rapid transit project that involves roadway improvements, we would assist on the roadway side. But Links has also proposed to have their own similar general engineering contract to deliver their projects. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Brooks.
We're hitting home stretch. Almost there. So oversight and accountability, obviously, as you saw, was an important item of consideration in those surveys, as well as this board had established oversight and accountability as an important factor for you. What you see, you've seen before, this is the, the structure that was ultimately decided upon by this board in 2022 with those particular criteria. And so we had a technical committee, staff oriented committee that represented all the jurisdictions as well as Metro Plan Orlando links to transportation juris, entities as well. This body, the technical committee, did not have decision making authority. It was primarily compatibility, coordination and consistency in terms of projects. So they took the approval list and just simply determined if there was opportunity for collaboration kind of review. That was their role. The citizens oversight board clearly was the area that was of note for this board and for the community as well. This is the body that addresses the accountability transparency from the standpoint of the citizens. And I'll go through the composition of those on the next, on the next couple of slides. But also very important to note that this is the entity that had that audit responsibility or audit opportunity in coordination with the Orange County Comptroller, the Comptroller's Office as well. And then of course, the Board of County Commissioners, by state law, you are the decision makers. That can't be delegated. You make the decisions on, on the projects. And then real quick, on the technical committee, this is how it's comprised. Again, each of the jurisdictions have a representative as well as the transportation agencies. Once again, purely technical, purely cooperative. And then the citizens oversight board, 11 member entity appointed by the mayor, the commissioners, as you see, as well as the jurisdictions, the cities. City of Orlando got a representative because of the nature of their transportation funding and so their transportation involvement. And then the other municipalities through the council of mayors, the other jurisdictions would coordinate and select citizens, two citizens to serve on this oversight body. And in addition to that representative, one of the mayor's representatives would be a public transportation consumer, primarily a transit oriented consumer is what was discussed or considered as part of that. And then there were some categories, some qualifications, if you will, that, that was included in the, in the ordinance, I believe, ordinance or resolution that addressed some of the considerations for the commissioners, the mayor commissioners and the cities in selecting their representatives. And again, that all comes to the Board of County Commissioners as again, to reiterate by state law, through the court case we saw in Hillsborough County, the board is the decision maker on the projects. That cannot be delegated or given to some other body. And with that, call Whitney Evers on the legal documents.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Comptroller Diamond. I am going to give you a recap of the presentation you had a couple of weeks ago. So I'm going to go through this a little more quickly this time. I'm sure that you'll be okay with that, right? I'm going to touch on the statutory framework, the legal documents that you'll need to adopt in order to pass the SRTAC as well as the ballot language. As you'll recall, sections 212054 and 212055 subsection one of Florida statutes authorize charter counties to levy that discretionary sales SRTAC in an amount of up to 1% for up to a 30 year period. That levy is contingent on being approved by the voters at the next general election. In order to accomplish that, you must adopt an ordinance and you do have to have a separate trust fund to be used exclusively for those SRTAC proceeds. Additionally, the statutes establish the authorized uses for which those SRTAC proceeds may be expended, but they may be expended in whatever combination the board deems appropriate. In terms of the ordinance, again, that will actually levy the SRTAC subject to approval by the voters. It will establish the rate and duration and create that trust fund that's required by the statutes. It also requires adoption of the transportation initiative report by resolution. It requires interlocal agreements with any municipality or transportation authority receiving SRTAC proceeds. And it will call for those routine financial audits of the expenditures, the SRTAC proceeds. Additionally, the ordinance will actually call that referendum at the next general election, which is November 5th of this year. And it requires two notices of that be published, both in the fifth and the third week prior to the election. The ordinance is also required to contain the ballot language. If the voters do not pass the ordinance, it will automatically be repealed without any further action by the board. Again, the resolution will need to be adopted alongside the ordinance that will adopt that transportation initiative report. It approves the funding categories for the SRTAC proceeds. It also sets forth the general uses to be funded each of the, to be funded under each of those categories. And it creates that technical committee and the citizen oversight board that you just heard Mr. Brooks mention. In terms of the ballot language, it does need to be clear and unambiguous. It needs to state the chief purpose of the measure and it must do all of that in under 75 words. What you see on the screen is a draft of the ballot language. As you see, there are blanks there. So as you've heard this morning, what we need to hear from you should you choose to move forward is the rate and duration that you would like to be filled in in those blanks. And with that, I will turn it back over to Mr. Brooks for the next steps.
Thank you, Ms. Evers. All right. So as we wrap up here, let's talk about as we engage in this work session today, April 9th. So where are we? Where do we stand? I would say to you, it would be ideal if this board can make this decision of whether or not to put this on the ballot, referendum on the ballot later in the year, say around July, August, like many other ballot initiatives. Unfortunately, as you know, the state requirement, state statutes or legislation that was approved a few years ago required a decision 180 days prior to the date of election. Therefore, we're in this schedule of needing a decision. The Board of County Commissioners have to make a decision of whether or not you'll place the referendum on the ballot. On April 23rd, that gives us the best opportunity to be in a position to meet those deadlines associated with the Apogga study, getting the ordinance, all those things that would initiate so we can make the 180 days prior to the election date. So as part of this conversation, you've heard references to what's changed, how's it different? You all have asked that question in many of the, the discussions thus far. And so while this is not all inclusive or holistic, we certainly wanted to note a few of the items that we believe have some significance. Obviously, one is the notion here that came up about have we used our existing resources? Have we looked at how we could maximize use of our existing resources? And one of the actions and the steps this board approved last year was the accelerated safety transportation program. That was a $100 million investment this board made into addressing safety projects and some transit needs in this community. And that was cobbled together from existing resources. An action from a few years ago was this board increased the impact fees so that developers paid a higher share, more representative share of the costs for their projects. One, the next item I'll note, the providing ongoing educational opportunities on the plan, what is that? So as you all recall, in 2022, after the April vote by the Board of County Commissioners, the, the level of engagement, community engagement from the county, from the county staff was curtailed. We wanted to be sure that we didn't run, not run afoul of the, the legislation, which also was enhanced. It used to simply state that you couldn't use dollars, which we understand, couldn't you use your, your county, your government proceeds to run a campaign or advocate for, commissions individually could, but we couldn't use those dollars. We wanted to be clear, stay clear of that. And so that is extended beyond to, we did not continue with any educational sessions, any of the community meetings, any of those things of that nature. We have conferred with our county attorney's office to be sure, again, we do not want to run afoul of that. What is, what can we do? And so, and under this scenario, we would continue to engage in educational sessions throughout the duration, all the way through November. We would be more than willing, we would certainly be available for any presentations to Homer Associations, community groups, industry groups. We continue, we can educate, we can put information out. And so that would be part of the plan this time around, that our efforts would not cease after April, the April vote, but continue to engage, have this level of engagement that we've had thus far. We have sought the commissioners' feedback on the projects. We've, and continue to want your feedback on the lists that you have in, in front of you. So this, what you've seen and we provide those lists, we've, we've made those changes on the feedback you've given us thus far. The defined project list, as you saw in the presentation, that also addresses the comment that came up in the past in 2022. There was a very thick document that contained all the projects and it was concluded in the resolution with the ordinance as well. But anything and everything that we can do to ensure that that's known, that's, there's more awareness. And although it was quick sharing that in a, in different formats, and that's also we're trying to work on how best to share this information. One of those tools that we want to take full advantage of is the interactive website, that tool that came out late in the process last time around. It is up, it is ready, we can load that and we would promote that. We would make sure that that is available so that citizens can actually go to their address, click on it and find out what projects are in their neighborhood or affect them or their commute to work. And so that tool would be made readily available. The delivery structure, Brett just covered that. That's one of those areas that it was in place, we knew we had an approach last time. We flushed that out in even more detail so that you had a better sense of what the structure would be so that we could deliver on these projects. And then this board, as you are doing, are considering a different rate, be it one cent versus half cent or different years, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years as well. And so to summarize, what was presented today is a very full presentation. I just wanted to go through some of those items, obviously of the community engagement. Those have been occurring in each of the districts. Each of you has, have hosted those. There are surveys, you heard the results of the surveys to date. The economic impact analysis certainly showed, I don't think it was surprising to anyone, but those who depend, who are more transit dependent. We know that they exist in our community and they certainly rely and need, and you heard their stories. This is an approach that attempts to address by increasing those, those needs, transit needs by increasing frequency and adding more routes. There's investment, but it also, that economic analysis showed us that transportation infrastructure, that investment creates jobs and has a positive economic impact on this community. The needs, the needs continue to grow, those needs that you saw that were presented from Links, from the county and from the municipalities totaled over 22, approximately $22 billion. The allocation, I'll mention this because we haven't had much, this board has not had a whole lot of conversation on the sharing of the proceeds allocation. The assumption that we've been used from 2022 as well was a balanced approach. It put transit on equal footing with other transportation projects. So you saw 45%, this model has been based on 45% of the proceeds allocated to transit, 45% to county transportation projects and 10% to be shared among the cities. And as Brett noted, even among that 45% for county transportation projects, the hierarchy changed. It really reflected more towards safety improvements and high incident areas as well, as well as there, you have heard, a desire, need for road widening as well, for adding, addressing congestion. So that's part of that, but it's not the totality of it. And with respect to the percentage from allocated towards the cities, obviously, I'm sure the cities would say they like more. You've heard from one mayor, Mayor Nelson came in from Apopka. To date, we did not receive anything formal or further discussion from the cities. So we don't have an actual proposal from the cities with respect to that. I know there's been some comments, some, some thoughts about that. But again, I wanted to just point out because to date, that's where we've been. And I just want to note on this, as no, this is the charter county regional transportation system SRTAC, which is different from the infrastructure sales tax. Some of you have commented, there have been comments about Seminole County, they have the infrastructure sales tax, which means it can be used for capital projects only. Not just transportation, it can be used for other projects, but capital only. This, the charter county regional transportation system SRTAC was selected because it could be used for O and M as well, which is so important for transit. Can only be used for transportation though, it cannot be used for anything other than transportation, but the O and M component is what makes this really viable for transit. You can buy a bus with capital, but you can't operate it and the services, and that's an important component of this. And then speaking of that transit, again, as you saw, and as you've heard about the desire, this plan, under the 20 year proposal added 241 vehicles, buses on the road. That's almost not quite doubling, but as, as Tiffany Homer Hawkins stated, there are about 300 buses in the Orange County fleet. So this is a very substantial in, investment in transit in this, as well as paratransit, which is so important and it increases that frequency. She talked about flipping it on its head once again, going from 50% of, of your service being one hour or more to 50% of your service being 15 minutes or less. That's significant. The sunshine corridor is included in the plan under the, but as, as Tiffany noted, there are some significant concerns associated with duration, that we have to have a great understanding, a significant understanding of how duration may affect our ability to compete for the federal, going through the federal process, since the 20 year commitment is needed to be able to show that. And there's a date, that timeframe that this becomes, would become an actionable item. And as I noted, this, this plan does reflect input commissioners and the public. And oftentimes we've heard, how does this reflect? And so you heard the citizens talk about transit, you heard them talk about bike compared safety, you heard them talk about roads congestion as well. And every one of those areas are hit, are touched, or we, we could check off. All of these are included, are covered, are addressed in the plan. Few of the citizens identified specific projects and when they did, in most cases, I believe those projects were reflected in the plan as well. But mostly it was on a broader standpoint in that these projects reflect a lot of, you know, that input, what you've heard on other bases, the Vision Zero effort as well. We, but to help the board in the decision that you have before you in terms of duration rate, we want to give you a clear indication of what could be done within that, that and rate, we want to give you a clear indication of what could be done within that, that scenario, what was likely that could be accommodated within a half penny, ten-year duration, all the way up to a full penny, twenty years, so that you fully can understand and see the implications of the decision on duration and rate. Again, we've talked about organizational structure, and the citizen accountability, as noted, it is included, it is an important step, we understand that, we've heard it from the citizens, heard it from you, and that is certainly baked into this, as well as the point of a separate trust fund must be established. So these dollars can't be commingled, they can't be in any place that someone can say, how can you account for it? But the actually, the funds has to be, from a sales tax proceed, the revenue has to be established in a separate trust fund, specific for the purposes associated with the projects. Again, we continue to listen to the feedback, desire the feedback, and our intent would be to continue community education and engagement beyond April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. And to close out here, as noted, the next community meeting is in District Two, and today, the rate and duration of tax needs to be decided. Now, we'll just note that the board can leave itself the maximum flexibility, other words, if you were to, because you can't go lower if you advertise a rate and duration, when you come back on the twenty-third, if you choose to, which is the decision, if you choose to advance to the public hearing, we have to advertise the ordinance. If we advertise the ordinance, we have to put the rate and duration in. And again, you can't go higher than what you advertise, but you can go lower. So if you advertise at one, one percent, full penny, and twenty years, thirty years, whatever that may be, you can go lower when you ultimately make the decision on the twenty-third, but you can't do the converse. If you advertise at ten years and one half penny, on the twenty-third, you can't go higher, if that makes sense. And on the twenty-third will be the public hearing, which would consider the ordinance, the ballot language, and the resolution. And with that, Mayor, Commissioners, we conclude the staff presentation, and we have this group ready for any questions you may have, and we await your direction.
Okay, so, in the interest of time, let me just check something. If we, this is a question for the county attorney, if we break now and come back at two fifteen to start the afternoon session, in order to give greater period of time, we've been here quite some time, I think we need to take care of the human needs, and maybe we can either start afternoon session with this, or move it to the, the end of the afternoon.
Whatever your pleasure, excuse me, whatever your pleasure is, Mayor, in terms of when you start it, you can.
Okay, all right, so with the board, we take this break, grab something quickly, we come back at two fifteen, we can pick it up right afterwards.
I just question, can we get a temperature of like, does this need to come back? Like, do we have the support? I mean, they've presented to us multiple times.
I have so many questions, I have questions, I have questions. Sorry, and we don't want hungry commissioners making decisions, it's just not a good.
Okay, all right, so then we'll come back as close to two fifteen as we can, and we'll take it up. Okay, all right. Okay, we're now in the afternoon portion of the Orange County Board of County Commission Meeting of April ninth, twenty-twenty-four. We had an item that ran a little long this morning, and that is regarding our transportation sales tax initiative, so we're going to start with that before we get into the former afternoon agenda items. And with that, we do have Mr. Brooks, the county administrator, back at the podium. Before we went into recess, recess, we, we had a number of commissioners who had expressed a desire to speak. I'm going to call on those commissioners in the order in which we have received their requests prior to breaking for recess, and we'll start with Commissioner Bonilla, then I had Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Uribe, Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Gomez Cordero, and so we'll see who has joined us by the time we get to that point, but we'll start with Commissioner Bonilla.
All right, so I move to, I'm just kidding. So, all right, so I have several questions. My first one is based on some of the last statements that were made, because I didn't, I didn't realize this from beforehand, or I didn't know this at all, that we could only use the sales tax for buying buses, but not for the operations, is that what you said?
Just the opposite, I was saying that the Charter County SRTAX, the one that had been advanced, is the one that allows you to use it for operations. The infrastructure sales tax, I referenced that because in some of the conversations, folks have made comment about Seminole County or some others, they have the infrastructure sales tax, which can only be used for capital and not O and M. So there was a conscious decision made back, Mayor, in twenty-twenty-two, that was why he chose the Charter County Transit Sales Tax for consideration.
Okay, so we can use it for buying buses and operations?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, glad I got that cleared. Yeah, because the way you said it, it was so confusing, I thought it was the opposite, so, okay, I'm glad I cleared that up. So also, on the, so on the widening of these roads, there are some widening projects. So if we spend this tax on capacity building, then that'll result in lowering impact fees? Because we have to re-
There, there will have to be a study, as you know, that will, there will have to be a study, because by law, you have to account for all different sources for, that go towards transportation projects, road projects. And the result of that study will determine if any adjustment, any changes would need to be made to impact fees.
Okay, because I know in your list of items, that how is it different, one of them was passes, we may have to actually lower impact fees.
Well, had you not increased them in it fast, you would have lowered it even further, you might possibly, so the fact that you are starting from a higher base, if that study comes back that supports some adjustments, because you have to, again, by law, you have to give that credit, you still are far in a well, in a way above where you would have been if you had the board not addressed this issue back, I think it was twenty-twenty-one, I believe.
Okay, and so by having to lower impact fees, if we're going to spend this money on capacity building, then we're shifting the cost from the developers to the taxpayers?
So with respect to the impact fees, understanding that that is applied towards growth, to new roads, we've identified these roads, these roads that have been identified are the projects that would be done from the revenue sources generated by the sales tax. We wouldn't shift money towards that, we would complete these projects, these are the projects that have been identified.
And so you're saying these projects that were identified are, can you say it again? So I can make sure I understand.
So the sales tax, there's, there's a list.
Yes, we got the list.
The project list has to be-
This one you're referring to?
The project list, so there's, the, the project list would accommodate, would accompany the, I think, ordinance through the resolution, I think, I believe it in the resolution, the project list. And so the sales tax would be used towards those projects that have been identified. To the extent there are new development that generates impact fees, regardless of whatever that rate is, it typically is applied towards roads that are identified, that have been impacted by that new development, and growth roads as well. So the distinction I'm trying to make is, you, you'll, you'll have that list, whatever list is ultimately approved by the board, if that's the list, or we have some modifications to it, those are the projects that would be funded through the sales tax.
Okay, so these projects for road widensings, at least in my district, they are projects that are only needed if the densities and intensities in the area are increased more than they are today, or more, that's what's, actually, I'll rephrase that, more than what's entitled today.
So you're saying there's no congestion on those roads right now, there's no needs, there-
No, actually, there isn't.
Okay, and you don't, so those aren't projects that are needed or projected to be needed? Basically, our growth, so, yeah, they are growth assumptions.
Well, I guess, I guess that brings to the, the point, too, one of the other items you listed on that, what is different now is that you worked with commissioners' feedback on projects. I really apologize if you've given me this list beforehand, and I have not provided feedback, but, you know, this is my first time actually seeing this list of road widening roads. So again, I, did you, you gave this to us before, because I, yeah, so I apologize for that, but-
Brett, you can say what list is-
I've not provided feedback on this yet.
Yes, when we did the individuals' briefings, yes. But we want, we-
Yeah, I don't remember going over road widensings, though, we were talking, we talked about the safety ones.
Well, we gave the whole list, I think, with the challenge may have been, I think yours, yours was a virtual, we could only do yours, yours virtual, and so what, and so that we don't know what you may have had in front of you at the time.
Okay, so, but yeah, these projects are, like, these road widening ones are only required if it increases beyond what the entitlements are today. Which, I'm, that brings me to the next point with Vision 2050, because with Vision 2050, I'm wondering, so all these projects that you have, the, the project list, right, is this taking into consideration the, in the increase of densities and intensities in Vision 2050? Or is this just based on today?
It does take into consideration 2050, so there was a model that was done for Vision 2050, there was a model that was done to look at the twenty-year projection, so we compared the two, and there were some projects that the model showed needed to be widened, but just weren't practical for various reasons. They were, you know, projects that, you know, the two-lane roads, so what are four-lanes road would be very impactful, so as staff, we looked at those and made decisions, but it does take into account that growth, for the most part, as 2050, but it's a twenty-year plan, so it's the twenty forty-five versus twenty fifty, so we kind of had to make some assumptions, but we did look at that. So this plan does try its best to accommodate the growth that you would see under that scenario.
Okay, so I have a question about the Sun Rail Corridor, too, that, I know, who's pushing for this is Universal Studios and iDrive Corridor. Would it be possible to fund that corridor with an MSBU that they pay for out of their Since they're the ones who are wanting, yeah, they're the ones wanting it, and so I know that, because I've asked Byron Brooks before if we could use MSBU's for public transit in certain areas, if it's benefiting the area, he said, yes, that is an option. So with the Sunshine Corridor, since Universal Studios wants it, and iDrive wants it, the business is there, why can't we do an MSBU where they pay for that corridor then?
So an MSBU, there has to be a direct correlation, that's the control, is actually a area of expertise on the MSBU's, and actually, so you'd have to define that area, be able to show the direct benefit. You have some parties that are already committed to put contributions in as well, so I'm not sure how that would be, I think, what we've heard and what has been offered, certainly suggested in terms of private contributions, is fairly significant, and it is another way, another means of which they are contributing, there, there will be private contributions. Now, if you wanted to have in a certain area, say a circulator running, because that, you can draw more to-
Like a neighborhood link, like if you want to do a neighborhood link in the area, you could do an MSBU for that area.
If those property owners, yeah, and it's, it's clear, you can have a real defined area, geographic boundary, show that, that cost and benefit to that resident, or those business owners in that area, perhaps an MSBU, TU, I'm getting a little bit outside of my, my area here, could be fashioned, could be crafted for that defined area of benefit. Control of that.
I, I think that, I think that's right, I, I think there's probably a variety of ways you could do it, whether it would be an MSTU, or MSBU, or, there's other, other mechanisms for property owners to contribute to projects. You know, I think of the South Orange Avenue Neighborhood Improvement District, I'm, I think the answer is yes, I agree, I think it would be possible to do it, depending on the numbers, that's, that's the second half, but it seems like there are legal mechanisms.
I do want to jump in here, because one of the things that Commissioner Bonilla said is that the property owners or Universal, they're the ones that want this, they want it.
I know, I know other people want it, too.
Other people want it as well, I think this is something that, from my perspective, is about benefiting the workers, not only those who work at the airport, who come in from surrounding areas, who go to work at the airport, who go to work on International Drive, who come from other areas, this is, this is about more than just to the benefit of Universal now. Universal, through the Sunshine Corridor Plan, had, has pledged to, to make some contribution and to guarantee some dollars towards O and M, but I, I don't want anyone to think that this is something that will only benefit just the people who have property on International Drive or thereabouts, but it benefits the entire county.
Okay, that's a little bit diverted from what my question was, because that's not-
No, that was your, that was what you inferred, you, you made the statement-
They are benefiting from it.
You made the statement that it benefits Universal.
It does.
And my point here is that, no, it, it may benefit Universal, but it benefits the entire county.
But it's the people who are on that corridor who will be most likely to use it.
They, they have made a commitment to financially contribute if the Sunshine Corridor becomes a viable option, and, but the total cost of that is beyond what they were bringing to table, to the table.
So I would definitely like to see a study on what that would look like if we had a certain radius from that corridor, you know, for-
That would just be pretty extensive here, not only, if this is something that is real of interest to the board, that we would actually go through that type of effort. And if it's for the Universal, kind of go back, is you have an offer that already has been proffered by a major party in terms of their contributions towards Sunshine Corridor.
Okay, so what I'm doing is looking at our options, trying to get an idea of what our options are.
And an MSBU, too.
I'm not saying to dedicate anything right now to another idea, but I would like to know what the options are. So I'm going to move on to my next one, because also, Winter Park and Maitland, they have stations, and so in their agreements with the Sun Rail, showing that if there's a sales tax, then they won't pay into that, their share anymore, that would come out, that it's a sale tax. So my other question is, well, why can't Winter Park and Maitland, I mean, right now, they're paying their share, so they could collect that however they want to pay it, but, you know, again, they could probably also do on their own MSBU, MSTU, to be able to pay for their share of the Sun Rail. So there's that. So Vision 2050, so when I was asking staff, I was wondering, like, how much it would, how much will it cost for the impact of Vision 2050? Because, you know, I, I was very supportive of Vision 2050, but I did not realize that it was going to include a total rezoning of all of Orange County automatically overnight, and so if that happens, I, you know, when I learned that, I asked, well, the way we get proportionate share for their impact in the roads is by roadway agreements, which happen when they apply for a change. So I don't know where our, that takes away all of our negotiating ability, and so when I asked the question, I got an answer that they're working on trying to find an answer for that, like, how they would be able to make that work, but at the moment, there's no answer to how we're going to be able to collect proportionate share for all those sweeping changes across the whole county. And we, so at this moment, we don't know how we're going to collect that proportionate share, which is very important to them breaking the roads, and whatever roads they break, they have to pay the proportionate share for, but if we already give them the rezoning in advance, without them even asking for it, then how are we going to collect that proportionate share? So then-
It doesn't, Commissioner, it really- It doesn't, Commissioner, it really doesn't work quite that way, the way you're describing it, the rezoning, the development plan, it doesn't work quite that way. But what I would really go to is, we're going to have a full discussion, in fact, later today, to start those, all those work sessions on Vision 2050 and Orange Code. I think that's a whole separate matter, distinct, separate from the matter before the board today, at this point in time.
Yeah, and that's, that really concerns me that, you know, we have a couple of different things going on, and, you know, I'll have to find that email where, I got the email where it's saying that, you know, you guys are working on it. But, you know, this is affecting each other, because if we're not going to be able to collect proportionate share with all the sweeping rezoning across the whole county, then the.
It doesn't, no.
Is it then shifting from the developers to the taxpayers?
First off, in terms of the proportionate share, really what you're talking about is concurrency, and the county's concurrency process would not be changed, or is not proposed to be changed, as part of Vision 2050. And so concurrency also occurs typically no later than vertical permitting. So the fact that, whether a project has comprehensive plan or zoning, they would still be picked up through a concurrency and a traffic review no later than permitting, unless they're otherwise exempt from concurrency.
Okay, and so do we know what those costs are? Of the, so, do we know the cost of the impact, of the impact? Because I also asked, because we're supposed to have a fiscal sustainability analysis tool by 2016, which we don't have, and then we have Vision 2050, which is up, upsizing, upgrading, you know, like, everybody with, with densities and intensities, but we don't know what that's going to cost a county, because we never did a fiscal analysis. I'm just, so what is it going to cost us in the roads deficiency? What's that going to add? Do we know that cost?
So one of the things I will mention with Vision 2050, it's planning for the 2050 horizon and accommodating almost a half a million more people that are going to move into Orange County in 2050 than, who live here today. Vision 2050 really is about reorienting the growth and where the growth, and how the growth occurs. We're still going to get 500,000 people. Vision 2050 doesn't allow, or it's not going to prompt more people to move into our region. These are people that are coming here anyway. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to be more efficient with Vision 2050 to direct that growth to the infill areas, to the targeted areas, where, in theory, there's fewer roads, or exist, sorry, existing road capacity and/or existing transit infrastructure that can otherwise be expanded to support that investment, as opposed to growing out, which would require new roads and additional widening projects. So all the, the 500,000 people are coming, and they'll be here in 2050. It's just a question of, again, Vision 2050 is looking to orient that growth differently than the way our current plan is trying to provide and plan for it.
Well, I, I'm going to say this, and I, I don't agree with what I'm about to say, and I don't disagree with you, but I'm going to give you another way to, I'm going to give you another way to look at this. You say these people are coming anyway. Well, if we keep our zoning the way it is now, and they build out the way the zoning is now, even if we adjust, you know, a little bit within our current comprehensive plan, there's not going to be enough units for all those people who you say are going to come, so they're not going to be able to come here, they're going to have to go someplace else. And like I said, what, preface this with, you know, I don't agree with what I'm about to say, thank you, and, you know, I don't disagree with you, but, you know, it's not 100% factual either, like, just, you know.
So Commissioner, again.
I do believe that we should build, you know, and prepare for it.
So we are, the last item of today is our Vision 2050 work session, where we're trying to bring in, in a series of policy issues that we still want to make sure the board's comfortable with, before we present to you a final plan and zoning code for adoption. Transportation's actually one of those topics on June 4th that we'll be doing a little bit deeper dive into, in terms of how Vision 2050 and an updated long-range transportation plan for the county ultimately relate to each other. And so that, that topic is scheduled for an upcoming work session.
Okay, but the, the problem is, though, that we do not have, no, that's all I had. The problem is that we do not have the, I don't see the plan. So when I asked staff about this, and they, they said, oh, here's my notes, that, and I quote, "Vision 2050 will break Orange County," end quote. Because our roads, they're not able to handle the increased density and intensities without a robust mass transit system. But the problem is that we don't have any plans for robust mass transit system, and the developers aren't paying for that, so I don't understand how, so it's like the, either the taxpayers are going to be in a situation where we're bumper-to-bumper traffic and we can't move, or taxes are going to increase in order to provide this robust mass transit system that actually may not even be feasible to build. So we're just, the reason why I bring up Vision, because it is, it does, is related to the sales tax, because, well, these projects right here that I showed, they're not even needed unless you're going to increase intensities and densities out in the rural area, you know, so I don't even know why those projects were even added there. I would prefer that to go to mass transit. And the way, I'm, I'm just, you know, the economic impact analysis that was shown was 2.2 billion in GDP, but we have such an issue with traffic, especially around UCF and the military installation there, that we're at risk at losing that, and that's a $9 billion GDP economic direct impact to Orange County. It's in the top three contributors to our economy here. But if we continue the way we are with our development issues, you know, we're going to, according to staff, break Orange County, and I just, so we're, it's just, I'm, I'm at a point where it's just so many problems and issues that we need to fix, and I can't trust the county on a sales tax when we're making bad development decisions that's going to break Orange County. Like, we really need to, we need, and I'm, you know what, I will be so supportive of this in 2026 and work with all of you trying to get, get there, you know, but we need to fix some things along the way before we could get this on the ballot, because we are going to need funding, but we have so many issues right now that we need to fix before we get there. So, and, 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 you know, more, more close issue I have is, you know, the closest issue is just putting this on the ballot with the school tax, you know, and then having them both fail is a huge concern of mine's as well. But I, you know, if we could fix these issues and have time to fix it, I will be fully supportive of it in 2026, if we could fix these issues.
Okay. We're going to go to Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So I want to start by really thanking staff and leadership that went out to these areas across the county. I know this was a big lift in a short period of time, and I really appreciated the fact that you let it be open mic. And because I think even though sometimes there were some tangential comments that people made, they wanted to be heard. And we're local government, we're the closest to them, we make that argument all the time and policy, so it was really nice to be able to actually see that in motion. I appreciate it. Mayor, you stuck around for, we had quite a spicy do you want engagement, and I, that, I love it. I think that's where we get to the answer, because sometimes it's in that middle piece. That being said, I, I agree, Commissioner Bonilla, I'm, I'm not sure if I understand some of the presentation, so I kind of was hoping if I could ask to go back to, and if I could ask a couple of questions for our links friends that are here, the potential projects at a penny on, I think it's slide, sorry, 32, maybe, 20-year transit plan, one So, and this kind of, a little bit relates back to, I think, some of what Commissioner Bonilla was addressing, and I don't know, you know, potentially if there's planning folks that can help out, too. I just don't know how else to ask the question. So if you see, really, the only route right now in what is considered in Vision 2050 of the 192 Growth Corridor and Horizon West Sector Plan, which both have urban to suburban intensities of, of densities of use, of residential. But the, the single looks like route that goes through there is an express route. So my first question is, where does that pick up and let, let off? Yeah, where does that pick up and let off? Or would it, where would it hypothetically?
So it would be at those major interchanges between the 408, the 429. That's where those park and rides come into play for those, because those are on express routes, limited stop, the park and rides, and those are major, the destination points are the employment centers from those park and rides.
So is there a hypothetical location? Are we talking West Oak Mall? Are we talking, because, I mean, major interchanges is, I mean, it's, we added about 60,000 new residents in the last 10 years out there, so that, just about every interchange, and especially according to the project list that we're going to address next, is going to be a major interchange. So I want to try to kind of just understand a little better whose services will be. Is this something that's going to go Winter Garden, Zoom, down to Disney, or is this something that if you live in Dr. Phillips, you'll have to drive? I, I'm just trying to understand the service.
So the park and ride location has not been identified, it's just an area. It all depends on the available right-of-way, available vacant land. We would work with our partners at the Turnpike, CFX, to see if there's any right-of-way availability, those, those types of things to minimize those costs.
So, and looking forward to the Vision 2050 discussion, and I think Commissioner Bonilla was alluding to this also, we've been working on Vision 2050 for several years now, and understanding the sector plan at Horizon West, where we do have apartment sectors, we've, you know, this commission has, and sometimes overridden my vote on some of these densities and intensities that are, there's not even, even the express goes by them. Has there been any conversations with our transportation about that future besides the express route?
There's, so Horizon West has been on the planning books for a very long time, and so, and again, it's a function of when the development comes in, but making sure that you're putting the infrastructure in in place ahead of time.
No, 100%, we're saying the same things, because I don't see that in either the contemplated improvement plans, and I haven't seen it in, in practice yet. I think that a lot of the conversations we, I had out in district, and I continue to have since 2022, really since 2020, they're like, we don't want buses out here. But it's not because they don't want buses out there, it's because there's no place to put the buses out there. So they can, they contemplate that that's just more stacking, which it is going to be more stacking, and that there's, you know, really been, in some of the urban planning, because it is a sector plan that went with some of the new urbanism ideas, where they've put some of the density apartments smack on a sidewalk. And so even looking for places for decent, a bus turn-in, or a, you know, a good bus stop, haven't been contemplated, and I know you're saying they wait for growth to come online, but if anyone's driven down the 429 from Winter Garden to Disney or to I-4, you know, it's, it's there. We're talking thousands of thousands of units. And so I just, I'm trying to understand with or without the one cent, how that density is even being contemplated as part of, they're going to be paying in, they're paying in now. I mean, they're getting, we're getting, we're getting revenues from that area. So I just, I'm trying to, it seems strange to me that this is all our usual, this is all within the urban service area. And so for my friends that try to argue that we are currently doing a better job of serving the urban service area, and so the rural service area should have its demarcation, this is a pretty good case for that, right? Because this is really the urban service area, as far as I can tell, because Dr. Phillips doesn't really seem to have any additional routes contemplated in the 20-year plan either. So I just, I, I need to be able to explain it and tell them it doesn't matter about the population, this, this is the way that, that it's been analyzed so far, but if you have some way for me to be able to explain that to them, because there are, I mean, some of these areas are completely built out, that Darryl Carter Parkway is pretty close to it, and there's just nothing there.
And so Commissioner Bonilla, those shaded areas are those flexible neighbor links, and it's the introduction into an area that is not ready for a fixed route, traditional 40-foot bus, but serves a geographic area and transit to feed some of those lines. And so that's the introduction. And as those services come online and folks get more used to it.
What is, what is the metric? So if the density, if the actual human bodies are not the metric, what is the metric for when they're ready to come online?
It, it's the demand, it's the socioeconomics, it's.
But there's never going to be demand if there's not convenient service. Like, those things are, it's, it's that weird self-perpetuating thing. People are, you know, I have residents that live in Oakland that Uber to a fast food job, so they're never going to call you and tell you that they need their service back, but you don't see them there anymore, so you're like, there's no demand. What do I tell them?
So we'll be happy to come and sit with you and talk about the existing services. That is one thing that is not shown on this map. This is for that 20-year plan and, and the increased frequency.
Yeah, but that 20-year plan includes the 20 years of population growth. Where do you think they're going? They're, I mean, that's what I think is so disappointing, is we know, we know where they're going, there are entitlements in place. I mean, I've been trying to wrestle, wrestle some of those and say, can we figure out how to space these so that we are prepared? But if we wait for that demand to look like people, you know, I don't know what, I don't know what that looks like when you say there's no demand if the humans are there and we're getting tax revenue from there. So, okay, so if we could look at the other map, I wanted to take a quick look at, was the, I think it's two up from there that showed the bus rapid. Okay, so I saw this, and I thought, okay, maybe this then means that if there is a additional revenue source, that there would be a bus rapid transit option or opportunity east-west on the 50, that sort of 50 line. And it is on there, it's marked, but it looks like from that grid that that's not until 2040? Am I seeing that correctly?
I'm sorry, which grid are you referring to?
Well, we've got a few, so hold on.
You're talking about the implementation.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at the slide 40. Yep, that's it, you got it, yep, that's it, the slide 40, right there, the transit plan. Okay, so it looks like the very last thing. Now, for those of us who live out west, our options are 50, right? Or the 408. And, and so an east-west connection for most people isn't I-4, and it's not, you know, with all due respect, Delwood to downtown or the airport, it's that, that true east-west 50 connector, but this looks like that there is very little, even if we are able to get the tax in place, for any east-west relief in the next, I don't know if I'm even going to be alive for this. So how did that get ranked?
So the regional, so there is east-west service, we have the express, the regional express service along the 408, there will be.
That stops at the West Oak Mall. So that's not, it's not Winter Garden or Oakland, right?
Okay, so it, yes, and so, again, phasing in these bus improvements and the timing for State Road 50, again, it's the road construction to maximize, so to minimize the, the impact to the public as State Road 50 comes online with the BRT.
Road's there, it's really fat. So, I mean, I would be willing to see some creative thinking about using one of those lanes for something besides, you know, huge SUVs with one person in them, but I know that that's not something that was talked about, even though in 2022, we, I think we all said, can we look at this a different way and use our existing infrastructure to move more people around? And I cannot think of a better place to do it than straight down that 50 corridor for, on, you know, both sides of the county. So I just, that is just my, that is, once again, I go back out there, I'll be talking to people in Oakland and Winter Garden and Windermere and Horizon West and Dr. Phillips, and I got nothing for them. I got, I mean, I literally have nothing to show them. So I just want to make sure I'm kind of breaking this down, the way that I've done the analysis and the feedback I'm getting. So I'm so sorry to put you on the hot seat on that, but, you know, there's a lot of people moving to that area, and we just don't have anything to show them for voting on this measure.
And Commissioner, that, that's the feedback we've needed to hear, again.
I, I made it.
This just a.
Again and again and again, 2022, if you go back and watch those, it's the, I had, I think the exact same sentence I. I think the exact same sentence I had was, the density is coming to these areas. Every two weeks, we see these units coming onboard. Can we please match potential services into the future with where we know the bodies are going, where the humans are going, where the families are going, where the children are going? How many new elementary schools did we open up at Horizon West this year? Four, five? To me, that feels like the place where, where infrastructure conversations would go beyond the schools. Now, I'm grateful they have their tax and they're putting their schools in, but I can't even sell that tax without saying no one's thinking about this, right? But the humans are there. So I appreciate it, I hope, you know, I hope to get back to the drawing board and figure out how we can better serve, but I appreciate the information. I do have another question about the project list, because it's the other one that I'm like, ah. So, thank you, thank you. I appreciate you being out in District One, explaining this, going into detail. Many, many, many of the things on the project list for District One that I kind of just zoomed through were, for roadway widenings, already roads of great safety concern because they're overbloated roads in very residential areas now. So for instance, Sidell Road, which I think, you know, everybody in the county's probably heard from me at least once about an issue on Sidell Road, even though it's fairly new. But there's an elementary school on one side, a high school, middle school, and then residences all around there. But it's already a very large four-lane with medians that are turned in, and then it, and it's on here for widening. So the night of our District One meeting, I had several residents come over that had played with the, the mapping, and they said, oh my gosh, why would they continue to make that road wider? They can't even get kids across the street now. Those are all parents that anticipated when they moved there that they would be able to bike and walk to school. But they're already so scared of that road that if they have kids under a certain age in a stroller, they don't do that. And so I don't, I didn't even know how to explain to them except for to say, there's no way that's on the list, I will double check. And sure enough, it is definitely on the list. So I wanted to ask, how was this list put together for the widenings? And, I mean, I, I think one of these, you've even come out and walked with my residents there at Hamlin Groves Trail and New Independence, it's on here for widening, Brett. It's on here for a widening investment with a sales tax. And my resident that met you out there walked around trying to show why we needed to actually be a little bit tighter and safer so that they can walk from the movie theater across the street and have dinner.
Yeah, we, we, we looked at, out at 20 years. We did have a model, so we looked at the 20 years. We did go back and make a lot of adjustments. We didn't, if the model said something needed to be beyond six lanes, we did not put that on the list. So we didn't say that anything, even though the model might show it needs to be eight-lane, we didn't. Forward to six lane.
Maybe we should throw out the model.
What'd you say?
Maybe we need to throw out the model or make it, take into account what's there. I mean, is the model just the cars? Or do you take into account there's an elementary school and a playground and a park?
Well, that, as I said, the model, the model is looking at, you know, where you have obviously an increase in employment, an increase in residential, that's what drives the trips for the most part. And then the model looks at where can those people go? And it puts, you know, it, it tries to define what's needed on these roadways. Of course, we look at it and we decide in some situations you can't widen the roadways. And, you know, the list is massive and the time we've had is limited, but we've tried our best. The intent is to get feedback certainly, so this is good feedback, this is what we wanted. We can modify those lists, we can change them. If we're not going to widen it, you know, and that was kind of the difference we were trying to show between the half cent and the one cent, if you're not going to widen it, we would like to do safety and intersection operational improvements. So you could say, hey, this is a corridor, you don't think it needs to be widened, but it needs to have safety and operational improvements. And that was kind of the, the balance we were trying to look at is which projects still need to be widened and which ones didn't. If we, if we made a mistake on these, you know, we tried our best to give kind of an initial discussion, but that's something you can certainly tell us if you said this is, you know, we got Commissioner Benia had some comments, if you think these are roadways that aren't appropriate to widen, we should still keep them in there, but they should be, you know, operational pedestrian safety, that's, that's the feedback we want. But it was a first attempt. The model had a lot more widening projects than we showed. We removed a lot because some of them were roadways we just knew were not appropriate to be widened for a variety of reasons.
Well, and I, and to the point of us sort of being at this crossroads in making decisions and needing to really have some confidence approaching our residents and saying that, that if you vote yes on this, that this will reflect what you've told us we need for, for investment. And, you know, understanding that that capacity issue is always going to be part of the conversation, it doesn't give me any confidence to go back because, you know, all, pretty much all of these have been, even my, my single best foot forward event doing, you know, a crossing was right on one of these that's now, that's on the, the widening list. So people are, are looking at that map and that interactive map. And so I, you know, I appreciate that, that this is what we have to work with right now. And I do, it, it sort of illuminates, I believe, that the time crunch is, is potentially not going to be worthy of putting it on the ballot this go-around. Thank you so much, though.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Uribe.
All right, thank you. If I could, Tiffany, ask you some questions. Can you share with us, I know that, have you guys officially taken over the Sun Rail or no? Just the links so far?
No, ma'am. What was voted on a couple of weeks ago was the funding commitment from the local funding partners. After that time, we, we are already starting to work on a transition agreement.
Okay, no, I was just curious. Because I, I just have a question about ridership. What's our daily ridership on Link's buses?
Our average daily has gone back up. We're about 63,000 to 65,000 just on the fixed route. And if you add in paratransit and the others, we're definitely over 65,000 weekday riders.
Okay, and do we have any Sun Rail numbers?
I don't have those in front of me, and I don't want to.
Do you know who would the county would have Sun Rail ridership numbers daily average?
Yeah, it peaked, it peaked obviously before the pandemic and has recovered, but they did get over a million last year.
Daily, daily, average daily.
I think they're getting, they're close to 5,000. Yeah, four to 5,000, I think, is what they're, is they're getting now. I know they've had some peaks. If you give me a couple of minutes, I could look at it. But I know they were, they got up to six to seven before the pandemic, and now they're somewhere between four and five in most days.
Okay, and do we have any idea of ridership in cars in Orange County per day?
I don't think, that's a question. I don't think we've ever looked at the sum of all of them.
Hundreds of thousands.
Because it's, obviously, they ride multiple, we have traffic counts, and obviously a lot of, some of the, you know, the I-4 traffic counts are over 100,000 a day in many sections.
And that's just I-4, so anybody who doesn't do I-4.
But then a trip obviously involves multiple roads. So it could be, you know, that person could also get off and go at 50, and then sections of 436 are obviously, can be as high as, you know, 60,000 in sections two, so. But I don't think we've ever been able to take in a total ridership because of course it's based on trip lengths and.
Yeah, so you, and you're just kind of ballparking, because I remember in Metro Plan, I think it was more than that, because when they were looking at the, the VIP lanes where you pay and all that, it was, it was increasing tremendously. Okay.
There are sections of I-4 that are well over 100,000 around downtown, 130, 140.
And I don't know, Brett, if you know this, what's our deficit financially? Because obviously, we've heard this over and over again, Link's doesn't pay for itself, and we definitely know Sun Rail's nowhere near paying for what it's due. How much are we in the hole on each, when it comes to Link's and Sun Rail?
Well, we, our, Orange County's, you know, there's a slide there with some summary. Orange County pays with the ATSP, you know, somewhere around 90 million.
For Link's?
For Link's, and then we're paying, the estimated for Sun Rail is about 15 million. That includes Winter Park in Maitland. That's per year for next year. So those are what our contribution was, the entire numbers for all of Link's system. I don't know the Sun Rail numbers, you know, the deficit. I think when you added up everyone together, it was in the 50 million range for all the funding partners. So, you know, that's, that's what it costs to supplement all the other income.
So we're still short 15 million on Link's because we're, we have, we share that. And, and so Byron, I know you said not only the infrastructure, but the, the operating. So we're expecting the penny tax to pick up this 105 million shortfall between Sun Rail and Link's with the penny tax?
So the, the way the assumptions work that Tiffany showed, and the way the, this was laid out in the plan previously, was indeed that the funding that currently is provided to Link's, which is general fund dollars, would be replaced with sales tax dollars. That would be part of that, that 45% transit.
So we're basically asking the residents to pay the shortfall on both of these. So the 90 million and the 15 million, that's where we're going to take it out of, you're saying?
I'm, I'm saying taxpayers are paying it now. We were, part of that plan and what was showed is it could either be paid from general fund or it could be paid from a, a source that is enacted for transportation.
Okay, so either way, from one bank account or another, you're, we're, we're saying to the residents we're going to pay. Is Brightline included in any of this when it comes to, and I'm talking about, we've heard discussions about the airport connecting to the International Drive, and we've heard over and over again about, you know, Brightline, there could be some privatization and blah, blah, blah to, do we know if, if that's still a contender? Because when we look at this number for that Sunshine Corridor, it's gone up tremendously from when we started this conversation to now we're like $2 billion. So is, is Brightline in this equation or not?
So under the scenario being considered, Brightline, depending upon who owns, so if Sun Rail owns the track, Sunshine Corridor, if it's under the public involvement, and Brightline wants to run service from airport to Tampa over those tracks, they would pay a fee, much like is currently in place, Safeway or Amtrak, some of that nature. So it becomes a revenue source under that scenario.
So you're just saying.
There could be other scenarios, I don't want to pinpoint on that because that's part of what's being under the study right now.
Right, I, because there's two parts of it, because we know the legislature just came back and said no money for, for Brightline to Tampa. So are we expecting, so there's zero money coming from the legislature. So are we expecting Sun Rail to cover the cost to Universal and then Brightline to pick up Universal to Tampa? Or is Brightline part of this negotiation to, because actually, I remember Mayor saying it once, like, we need to look at all private and public and things like that. I'm trying to understand where Brightline's footprint would be on this when we talk about that extension, because we're essentially paying, we're taking care of 20% of their ridership in the sense of, they're going to get closer. There's one thing, if they were going from Tampa, from the airport to Tampa, now if the Sunshine Corridor goes to Universal, then it would be Universal to Tampa, which is less. So I'm just curious to know, are they at the table at this at all?
Sunshine Corridor is anticipated to be from airport running local service from the airport to, say, the South I Drive area. Brightline has a different passenger mix. Its passengers would run, they're 10 minutes ago, from Orlando International Airport to Tampa. Different services, different frequencies.
I'm not saying that. What I'm, I'm asking about the infrastructure, the tracks.
Correct.
Because they would want to use the tracks. They're not going to build their own tracks to do the same corridor. Regardless, they got to go past Universal. So from, are they at all at the table and negotiating on what their partial share cost would be on that? Because now you're hearing over $2 billion.
So, so that's a different conversation. I guess what I'm saying is there are different scenarios being considered. There is a scenario that if Sun Rail, part of the Sunshine Corridor becomes part of Sun Rail, anyone who uses any track that's, that, that's constructed through that federal process, i.e. Brightline, would have to pay for their share. Now, on a parallel track, there are discussions with FRA. I, I mean, it's, it's a, a different conversation than, you know, we can have today in terms of, of what those discussions, and we more than have to get with you, with FDOT, because they're, they are driving these, these studies, these analyses, and these discussions as well right now. But the thought would be if Brightline were to run any service, i.e. on those tracks, unless they, maybe they're two different tracks. I mean, that's why a lot of things that have, have still have to be considered. But if Brightline did run on the track, Brightline would have to pay for that. There wouldn't be any subsidy.
I understand that. I'm not talking, clearly, if they use it, it's kind of like Amtrak. When Brightline uses it, they pay for it. What I'm trying to say is the $2 billion-plus project we're talking, it's more than just them using it. Would they pay towards the infrastructure? But we'll have to find that later because we don't know that. But I was just curious to see if you had any of that data.
So Byron, I think she's asking a different question. Commissioner Uribe, actually, Brightline will own the track. The Sun Rail, Sun Rail would lease space to run its train sets on there.
That's why, my point wasn't just that. There are several different scenarios. There was a scenario that local, there's scenarios being considered of Brightline owning it. There, there are different scenarios. That's why I said this is not a conversation.
Because the scenario that is, the leading scenario is that Brightline does want to get to Tampa, but they have to come out of the airport. They have existing lines, but they would have to lay additional lines to meet their goal of getting to Tampa. But they would be a private sector investor. We would, the conversation is more about us riding on their lines in certain areas, but in other areas, to the benefit of Orange County, we would potentially have to build additional lines to, to connect to areas that would be local commuter ridership.
All right, so we, we still don't know, but I mean, that's just a hefty price tag. And I've heard from people, well, I hope the county will pay for it so we can keep going. And that, when you talk about this entire plan.
Yeah, there's no scenario in which the county is subsidizing Brightline.
Okay, so we won't, and then I know that Commissioner Benia talked about an MSBU, an I Drive, and Comptroller Diamond was like, sure. But my, my question now goes, the CRA that already exists on I Drive, can't, and we know it collects a hefty amount, would we be able to leverage the CRA to assist with that so that it is not all on the taxpayers? It actually, you can truly say it's on the visitors, because that's a fund that's dedicated from the people who visit the I Drive corridor. And would, you know, we, we hear a lot of tourists are going to pay 52% or 51% of this. Can't we leverage the CRA to allow that to go in to it? Is that, and I don't know if that's Comptroller Diamond, because he's more aware, or you?
So use of CRA dollars would have to be for component of the project that, that directly.
Comes there. So you've got to build a station, you got to do all that, so I'm.
And so if CRA, if it's added to the plan, if it's not in the plan right now, because that, anything that's been, has to be in the CRA plan. Transportation is allowable, use in the CRA, in I Drive CRA plan. You look at that, that possibility, could CRA fund a portion of some service, transit stations, for example? Could that be a source? Yes, it could be a source to cover a use in the I Drive area within the footprint of the CRA.
Which, yeah, and we're talking about possibly having a station there, right? I mean.
Correct, yes.
How do we move that conversation? Because I think, I just got an email from a resident.
Well, the CRA, the station has also been, yeah, this perhaps, when we have, next time, we have District Secretary Tully as well, because that's also part of, the stations are, are part of that, that, that capital, what, what would be put together as part of the, the capital plan as well. The cost for stations would be part of that as well.
Okay.
In terms of what the revenue, how you pay for that, once we get to whatever share could be, hopefully, you know, again, I, I'm just hypothetically, hopefully get the 50% share, federal share, hopefully you get the normal transit kind of component of the state share for that. And then we get to that point of what is that total cost? But the stations are typically included, the capital costs of stations are included in that cost estimate.
Okay, I mean, I think we, we really should be addressing that because I have an email from a resident who, one, of the tourism. And I know at my community meeting, somebody said, why don't we use TDT? And we can, we know, we know, so I'm not going down there. But Mayor explained it to a resident in mine. But they did say, you know, why aren't we using any possible funding like the CRA on, of tourists to help pay for this, to subsidize part of it? Because as we're asking residents, we should be, you know, leveraging as much as we can and knowing that the CRA is a hefty budget and the invested organizations that benefit from the CRA and the beautification and so forth are right there. And then as a total sidebar, it would also prevent annexation by the city of Orlando, you know, when you commit the CRA to it. And I think these are perfect, you know, strategies of things that we should be discussing before we tell residents, pony up more money. We should have exhausted everything possible for, I mean, and Byron, I don't, I don't really want you to answer, I'm just kind of sharing my thought because that's what we're hearing over and over again. It's the expectation of you want our residents to pay for this. You know, we hear Visit Orlando say 75 million people visited Orlando. Yeah, but they didn't give anything to transportation outside of their six cents of gas. They're not paying into the roads that we need to maintain, they're not paying into any of that. So when we look to leverage, I think we need to be cognizant of things like the I Drive CRA to help subsidize that cost. And I, and I do appreciate, because our last meeting, you said we've increased the transportation impact fee and, and all of that. But what also worries me is, and I, I mean, I'm a very dense district, but when I look at Commissioner Bonilla, Commissioner Gomez-Cordero, and Commissioner Wilson, everybody wants to keep building out, building out, well, that's going to cost us roads, it's going to cost us. Well, that's going to cost us roads, it's going to cost us infrastructure, it's going to cost and cost and cost, and we have no way of controlling it. And then even the current situation we have at the City of Orlando, and I know we've sat here where Boggy Creek, I remember Chris Testerman, we're paying for all the road improvement and they annex it, so we've taken care of the bill of their infrastructure for the roads, and then we're stuck losing the revenue, tax revenue, because it goes to the City of Orlando. So I do not feel... Everybody's kind of given their thoughts. One, I feel like we're rushing this. I am not satisfied. I was, and I shared with Brett, I was a little upset at the lists that were given to me, because you included things in my list, just because the stoplight was on OBT. You said, "It's my district," when the road is Commissioner Scott's. West, excuse me, East Oak Ridge Road, Americana. The only thing Americana does on District 3 is we share a light at Americana and OBT. That is not a District 3 project. But my issue in my district is the infrastructure with the road. How many conversations have I had with Derek about, "I need sidewalks, I desperately need sidewalks," and not where they're easy to put up, where people are walking in the street because there's a ditch on one side and not enough right-of-way? But yet, and as I was told, it's an easy do to put sidewalks everywhere else, but not where they're actually needed for pedestrians. Where I have the dead... We share the deadliest road, number eight deadliest road in the country, three of us, four of us, and yet, we can't properly... And yet, Tiffany can say, "OBT is one of the busiest corridors for links." And when people get off and they walk in the road, from students to women pushing their baby strollers, they're walking in the middle of the road. And I cannot full-heartedly say, "This looks good," when I know what my issue is and it's not consistent. And I do believe we have to really, really exhaust the CRA and things like that. I think the Sunshine Corridor is a good idea when you think about, I think, what, 120,000 people who work between the airport and international drive, and they deserve to be able to get home in a timely manner. But we should be looking at every other way to help pay for it before we go to the taxpayers and say it. And honestly, I don't... I've already said, I didn't feel comfortable, because I just feel like we're doing the same thing over, and I couldn't support this for this ballot right now. If we can work on it in two years, would be a different story. But as of today, I don't support it.
Okay. And going back to just the Sunshine Corridor, there will be that time that a decision will need to be made in terms of what the... Part of this as well, but once we have the full cost, once we go through all the studies that have been discussed, T Card, then you go through the project development, that's when you get to that point of really understanding and then you begin to start putting together the revenue sources associated with that as well. So it didn't preclude, this doesn't preclude, the board maximizing its flexibility on what it sources. That time will certainly come. And as you saw through that schedule, there's a point where there's a full funding grant agreement that has to be done as well. So I just wanted to be clear, I hear what you're saying.
I understand that, but I mean...
It doesn't preclude... This never precluded the other, like a CRA, anything contributing towards...
But just the confidence in my residents would be that I would have proven all of that before I asked them to put their hand out for money. And that's where I'm coming from. We should be exhausting all of the financial revenue before we ask them to pay for it. And that's where my... And real projects, I mean, I looked at my list, and I had a lot of issues with my project. I keep having conversations with public work staff, because where I need them, I can't get them. Right at road, got kids walking on the road to this bus stop. I can't get a sidewalk there. But you'll stick them in another area. So that's what I'm saying. At this point, I would not support this going forward now.
We got it. Commissioner Moore.
Okay, this has not been a fun day, so... This is a really tough conversation. I could see it by looking at everybody's faces. It's important. My first question's going to be for Brett. And I don't like to ask "I gotcha" questions, so I'm going to tell you why I'm asking ahead of time.
Sure.
Okay, so you're not going to like, "Why is she asking me this?" I have the... My district is the tale of two opinions. I've got, and you mostly are running into my folks who really care about Vision Zero and safer roadways. And you're hearing about that on Clerkona Coe Road, and we've got money still in the budget to do some safety improvements there. But I'm in a dilemma, because my city of Okoe didn't submit a plan, and my Apopka didn't submit a plan. And what I hear in those communities is they're high-growth areas and they want capacity. So my question to you about this Vision Zero, it seems like we shifted, and I'm not sure we voted on that, to make such a shift... And I know we all don't agree, that's the challenge. Maybe if we had a à la carte for each district, we could kind of get it right. And it's tough for you. You're looking at data, and we're talking to people. I tell people, I could tell you the character of every one of my neighborhoods, from campaigning eight times and walking. And so that's the value we bring. We can report back to you what we hear fairly accurately, and all of us can. And so I've got my unincorporated areas would agree with you with such emphasis on pedestrian safety, but they don't say it that way. They say it more about speeding, right? And we know we... I'm sorry, Mayor, but we don't get the support from the Sheriff's Office to slow them down, so it's a lot of pressure on our staff to deal with it from an engineering and an education perspective. So is that what you mean? I'm not even clear on this pedestrian safety. Are you talking about slowing them down and making the roads safer? Because if I can't understand and explain to my people, we're going to have a lot of problems winning a vote in District 2.
Yeah, sure. I think that you can look at speeds, no matter what you're doing on a roadway. So if a speed is an issue, and you know, when we... Clerkona Coe is a good example. So when we studied that, we had kind of three tiers, right? So some of the tiers are speed feedback signs, and we know that those have limited, you know, ability. But the other one was adding medians and narrowing the lanes. We know that that does slow people down, and that also decreases conflicts. But one of the big things that slowed people down was roundabouts, right? So we proposed several roundabouts. We know that roundabouts will, because you come to the intersection. So we kind of did a progressive, three-phase improvement on that, but it also did provide some capacity as well. So that's a good example of a roadway that would fall into that second quarter category, which we're calling pedestrian bicycle intersection safety, because there was also additional pedestrian crossings in there. So all of that, you know, that's a good example. But that project, we only have maybe like one-fifth of the cost of that with the Accelerated Transportation Safety Program. So if a half-cent or a cent was passed, you could fund the remaining improvements on that seven-and-a-half-mile corridor. So that's a project that, you know, is a good example of what we would do, because you're looking at all those elements. Years ago, when I was at Seminole County, we had a widening project. The right-of-way alone was going to be, you know, 80% of the cost. So we did an analysis, and we said, "Well, you could spend a fourth of the cost of the widening and get about 75% of the capacity benefits with intersection improvements." You know, that's not the truth for everything, but that's what you'd want to do. You'd want to look at each individual corridor. And sometimes, you can still get a lot of the capacity from intersection improvements without widening, with some right-of-way. So that's what we look at with the pedestrian, you know, bicycle safety intersection. We're trying to look at the whole corridor without widening. But there are some projects that need widening, especially with areas that are high-growth. You just need that, you know, spine of the transportation system, so you're not going to avoid that. There's going to be some areas where we still need it, and this plan doesn't, you know, eliminate that. We were trying to break the half-cent and full-cent to say, to propose something, you know, if we were to break into a half-cent. And so when we looked at that, we said, "That's a good, pretty good break," is, you know, the widening projects, they tend to take longer, they're more impactful. The safety projects are usually, you can done quicker. So we thought that was a good break, especially for a 10-year, because it's hard to do a lot of widening projects at 10-years. So, but if the board, you know, gave us direction on something different, you know, this is, like I said, I kind of said, "This is illustrative." So when we had a lot of the discussions, the meetings about half-cent, we wanted to present something back to you, but it is, each district is different, and that is the challenge. So each district could have a different scenario, and, but, you know, this is just one.
Well, that's right. I'm going to jump in there, because I think my folks along the Clerkona Coe Corridor, if we just called it "safety improvements," I think that would go a long ways, because that's the main reason people call our office every day. And that particularly more urban, there's a little bit of rural through Clerkona rural some. They would agree with you, and they would want their money there. But when I get out into Apopka, and it's not even in the plan, if I don't talk about Plymouth Sorento Road, I mean, I'm going to get creamed. And so I think we need some more tailoring, and perhaps, you know, my meeting coming up, we might have to talk about this, is I have them broken up in areas. And if we actually had the conversation in each of these different sections, I think we could come up with the right mix. And that's what takes time and a lot of energy, and we have to do it collaboratively with our community. So they say, "Look, I've been in those meetings, and we made that determination. We're going to widen the intersection, we're going to put up chicanes, we're going to have roundabouts, and we're all going to be better." But on Plymouth Sorento Road and Binion Road and, you know, Rock Springs and Kelly Park, they are drowning in extra traffic, and they want more capacity. And so this is tough. This is really tough. This was the... I missed this, you know, in 2002 with the school board. That was when they first developed the list. And the big conversation was at that time, and it's kind of funny, my neighbor was the school board member. We've had all these school board members from Palm Chris Drive, but they had to wrestle with, "Do we new schools, or do we renovate these old schools?" And I kind of liken this, "Do we have extra capacity? Do we have more transit? Do we have more safety?" And I think we have to develop that balance with the people. And the more we have smaller meetings and become... Because I think we can. I think we can easily come to those conclusions if we have a way to break it down. I don't know how the heck y'all could come up with all this in one fell swoop. I mean, it would take me weeks just to do District 2, and you did...
Good, very good staff.
You did the entire district, and so no shame from what you had to do. I've got a real issue with that page with the cities. Can you... No, that may not be you, Brett. That may be back to Byron. It's with the cities. Is that you, Byron? Explain to me this one penny, or who?
Just the two of us, yeah.
Because that's my next... And obviously, I've got my Okoe and Apopka who didn't send lists, and I'll save my comments on that till I understand the one cent and how much money they got. I didn't... And I have to say, the lawyer over here, she didn't understand it either, so you can explain it to...
Is this the list that you...
She said she wasn't into math.
Is this the one you're referring to?
We don't understand it.
Is this the right side?
Yes, that is the one. Explain this to me.
So this is a distribution based on population over the period of time, one cent versus half-cent for the different periods of time. And each broken down by city. And then on the right side is what they actually submitted for their lists. So they can submit well over the revenues, but we asked them to submit a list basically for 20 years, one cent.
So that's what they'll get? So it is the 1% that they're going to...
That's what they're going to get for those four scenarios.
So they're... So this is... Let me use Apopka.
Not one. This is based upon if you go a full penny. That 1% is full penny, not what they get. So this is if you go a full penny for 10 years or a full penny for 20 years. This is how much, 10% of that full penny, the way the scenario worked is, of the amount generated each year. So a full penny generates, I think it was 759 million dollars. 10% of that was allocated towards the cities.
Cities, right.
So 75.9, let's say 76 million dollars will be available to the cities.
76 million total to all the cities annually?
Each year, right.
Each year, 76 million?
Correct.
Okay, so then what percentage is...
And then based upon the population, so then we use a population formula for cities. So based upon, so if City of Orlando, of the cities, if City of Orlando, I can't remember, I got the chart back in my office. If City of Orlando was, let's say, 50% of all the population of cities.
Okay.
Then they got 50% of that.
And then they get 32 million, but, or, you said, what'd you say, 75 million years?
So they got...
76 million, so they would get half of that.
Correct.
So that's like 38, okay.
Correct.
So, but it doesn't say that anywhere in the chart. That's why I'm really confused.
It's a 10-year projection, and that number that Byron's showing is the first year, so it's grown over 10 years. That's why it's not 760 million at that bottom-left column. It grows, it's a projection that grows each year. So if you just said 76 times 10, it would be 760 million, but it's 870 million at that bottom-left. Does that make sense? Because it grows over 10 years.
All right, but where's the figure we can lift off for all those that didn't major in mathematics, that each of the cities would get? Because I've got it, look, I've got Okoe and Apopka who didn't even want to do this. I've got to go up and say, "You're going to trade out X number of million?"
So what this shows is, if the board, let's just say with that, the second column, the 1%,
For 20 years.
A full penny for 10 years. What it's saying is, over 10 years, the City of Orlando, City of Apopka, yes, about City of Apopka, the City of Apopka would receive $91 million, a little over $91 million over that 10-year period.
10 years. So, now I can do math, so it's about $9 million a year, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we had the growth factor in, of 3% per year. So that's why over 10 years, it grows up beyond that 759 million. But yes, so that's, on average, they would get about $9 million a year.
Okay, so I just take the first column and divide by 10?
Correct.
And I can tell what they're getting annually?
Yes.
Okay, that made that a whole lot easier. Is everybody else clear?
And then all the way to the right is what they...
Their math is better than mine. I don't know. Okay. All right, so, but what do I do with the fact my two biggest cities didn't submit lists, and now the list over here, the roads we have, they're not, wouldn't be my favorite ones to widen? Brett, how do I, what do I do with that?
So, I'm not sure. So your question is...
My question is, my cities didn't participate, and now when I go back and try to sell this, the roads, most of them are interested in capacity. I don't have anything.
Yeah, that's a difficult kind of predicament here, because we don't know the read that if cities then weren't interested, if this were on the ballot and ultimately passed, that means they don't want the proceeds, or they still want the proceeds, but they didn't show their list. So that could be part of a... Obviously, we don't know what to make of that. We made the request several times during our conversations, gave them the date, and asked if they submit their list, and...
Well, so then I guess I'm on this...
Apopka did say, Apopka did say that they, they just decided they're going to set, Chuck said they would sit out for now, because they just believe cities needed more money.
Okay. So that puts me in a dilemma. I mean, obviously, I'm going to have to take some time and go back and talk to those two. So I'm a little bit perplexed at how to vote today, because I feel like I need more time. I mean, obviously, I've got to get this straight with Okoe and Apopka. So thank you for answering the questions and helping me with my math.
All right. Commissioner Gomez Cordero.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow. Okay, mine is very simple. I was checking, thank you for the presentation and all the briefing and everything. I was checking the slide number 32 as well, and I was, I saw on the express routes, and also with slide 34, which has the sixth priority corridor for Bus Rapid. Nothing in East Side. I would like to see more activity in the East Side, especially like, one of my colleagues was saying before, I need to offer something in that side of Avalon and Waterford Lake, which I know it gets in the green, in the green slide, I mean, in the slide 32 in the map, there's the green line that is the express line. But then, we have also, and I haven't seen, and I was looking over, and I don't see anything going to, around the, I don't know, Lake Pickett, Bethlow, Christmas, Westview, which is District 5, but also the edge of it is District 4. So we don't see anything in the East Side for them to benefit in no routes or anything. So I would like to see a little bit more activity on that, since we are here to get more ideas, right? So that's what I I would like.
Taking note.
Okay, and that's, that's it. My colleagues talk about everything else, so thank you.
Commissioner Scott.
The CRA, it sunsets, I Drive CRA sunsets 2028, is that correct?
I believe, I believe so.
It's set to sunset. And based on your responses to Commissioner Uribe, if the I Drive CRA or it could absorb some of the cost because transportation is, but we would have to potentially obviously extend it and make some, probably some minor changes to how it is structured as far as the the goals, correct?
Definitely would have to extend it and there's a transportation component, since I don't have it in front of me, to see if the trans, the transportation as allowable expense already includes, is broad enough, written broad enough, that includes, I know it includes transit because we're funding the bus, some enhanced bus service out of that CRA. But definitely, you're correct, it would have to be extended.
Okay. And let's say the CRA funds whatever portion that does happen. In addition to that, speaking to Commissioner Benia's comments, we could also create a MSBU or MSTU to pick up another portion potentially. Is that correct?
Also, keep in mind there, some portions of that area also have a CDD.
Right.
In place, which is part of the the support system, that is anticipated as a funding source as well.
Understood, but that, but an MSBU or MSTU is also possible in addition to those other mechanisms?
There are many means of assessment, as the control said, there are many means of assessment, if that's something that the board had interest in pursuing that, I think also it requires a vote of the folks, I guess the board can override that.
It depends on exactly what, but there's options.
Okay. Next question is for Carol. Carol, thank you for putting the meetings together. Thank you for mine, it came out well, so I appreciate the work you put in on that.
Thank you.
Do we have a, I guess a date? I know I had asked twice for the the breakdown by precincts, have, are you guys going to get that to us or when is that?
We sent that to you, Commissioner, and my apologies if you didn't receive it. I think I sent it on April 1st.
April 1st, okay.
Yes, but I can, I will.
Can you send it to me?
Send you a hard copy, I will bring you a hard copy. I think I have some in my folder right now, so make sure you have it.
We have a nice presentation, right? Carol, if you could just articulate in a 30 seconds or a minute, just articulate from all the meetings that you participated in, what is your temperature check of sorts of what the voters are looking for in comparison to what the comments were in the first attempt?
So Commissioner, when we look back at the, just looking at surveys alone, I think we saw very similar results of what the challenges were, looking at traffic congestion, commute time, pedestrian safety, we saw that rise and increase from last time. So just looking at a few of those survey components, but listening, as Byron referenced, when we've done, completed six, we do have one more to go to. Not as detailed in the approach of particular intersections, roads, traffic signals, I felt like we had more of that information in 2019 and in 2022 when we went out. So this was more of a broad, because I was looking for that even from the first meeting, taking a lot of detail that we just didn't see. I think you've heard from some of the public comment, just looking to see what was different in the plan, we heard some of that in District Four, and we've heard our residents respond to what they would like to see, increase in pedestrian safety, we heard a lot of that, that probably resonated throughout all the, all the meetings and transit and transit options.
Okay, so.
And more mobility options.
So more, more focus on mass transit, pedestrian options, middle of the road in terms of whether they would be favor or against, right? Is that, would I be accurate?
Right, you know, and I just, I went back because I was, just wanted to count for myself and, and you know, not everyone spoke, but about, from, from taking all the public comments and you all have those, people who said, I do not support the tax, I think it's a burden, it was about 10 people out of the 200 comments that we received. So 10 said they did not support it, others were supportive if it went for pedestrian safety, if they saw something go more towards transit. Now, I don't know, we have 550 comments right now from our survey, so I would have to look at that and see what we have as far as just that absolute no versus those solutions is what we really want to see, is to be more solution oriented and hear their input.
Thank you, Carol, I appreciate it. Brett, you're up next. We've seen a lot of pedestrian projects and and road widening, right? Going back to what Commissioner Benia was saying, let's say in any given district or in any given road, the time comes based on what you guys have shared here today, no changes, right? To widen a road, but you see either through traffic studies or feedback or combination that there is no need, then how would you, would those funds be reallocated elsewhere? Would you just kind of wait and kind of hold them to reassess in maybe a year or two? What would be the plan?
Yeah, obviously, the, part of the, I think the, help us, the ordinance or the resolution stated that there would be a project prioritization process. So certainly, we have to look out 10 or 20 years here, so conditions do change. We do studies, when we start, we go into the study process, we do try to project traffic, but if traffic patterns change and shift, certainly we'll reprioritize and those are projects can, we've already seen that in areas where we started off looking at a project that might be a widening project, tiny road in Commissioner, just Commissioner District One is is example, we started to look at it as a widening project, after looking at it and with the capacity, you know, capacity needs, it became a safety and operational project. So that's typical, that's part of going through the study process, that that shifts and change. We, we don't, our, our roadway conceptual analysis looks at the project and it doesn't just say this is a widening project anymore, it looks at the need and what is there from the very beginning and we look at all elements. So that's, that's typical that we make and, you know, one of the problems is when you do something very large and you look at a very large system and model, it's going to not be specific to those conditions, that area, that's where we go into the studies and start to really nail down and go to a very narrow area and see what's appropriate in this area. And of course, we have been introducing the the ICE, the Intersection Control Evaluations, which looks at different intersections now, so it's not just always traffic signals, sometimes it's other innovative stuff. So that is typical of when we look at studies that they change based on those needs at that point. So looking out 20 years, we say, okay, this might be what it needs, but obviously, when we get closer, that can change a lot.
Thank you, Brett. Madam CEO, you're up next. I just need clarity about the the flex routes, because I wasn't really understanding what your response is. So in the areas like Dr. Phillips, are you saying there would be like a smaller type of vehicle of some sorts to be able to, can you, can you clarify that for me, please?
Yeah, so our current Neighbor Link service is a smaller vehicle, it serves a geographic area, it is on demand. So for, again, for areas that may have been developed with walls around the subdivision and the corridor is being widened, but again, not ready for fixed route transit, it, it's an on-demand service, you can look at it on your phone, through the website or call, and it will take you from your door at your house to the grocery store. And so again, it serves a geographic area on demand.
And what is the capacity and is it?
Those are about 15 passenger vehicles.
Also like a 15 passenger van?
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm assuming people make their requests, does it have to be 24 hours in advance or?
Uh, 2 hours.
So 2 hours in advance and I guess similar to maybe like a Links driver or Amazon delivery driver that does the flex, they routes are prioritized based on the requests from the riders and they pick up accordingly and it, does it, I guess, give you an estimated pickup time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so from that flex service, you would then monitor that based on the, the number of requests, frequency of requests, say, hey, we may need to look at something fixed based on the data from that?
We would, we would look at the passengers per hour, the passengers per vehicle. I will give you an example, during the recession, Osceola County needed to cut service and so they had a fixed route circulator in the Point Sienna area. They chose to implement the the flex service, the Neighbor Link, and it was so successful, we had to put a second vehicle. And then that became more successful and had to end up putting a third vehicle, which was comparable to the fixed route cost, and then ended up putting the fixed route back in as a circulator in Point Sienna, again, going back 15 years. So that's how long these Neighbor Links have been serving these geographic areas.
And my final question for you, you don't have to necessarily get into too granular detail. Let's say we, we in this conversation right here, right now, other than the, the improvements we've made with the $100 million, how would you be able to account for the growth without this revenue source? Like what is your plan or what would you look at? More federal funding, state funding, how would you be able to address the need?
All of the above, and one of the things that we do at Links is look at our route performance on a route by route basis and how do we allocate the lower performing routes to those higher performing routes and more of that demand? Our development patterns have changed over the history of Links's 30 years and we recognize that. And so we, we can take late night, a couple trips and put it on a morning trip to maximize that passenger count. So that's a way we do it. And then it's also a matter of talking with our funding partners and recognizing that need, but all of this is an annual appropriation by our funding partners.
Because you're operating in that now, because it did fail, so you're operating in that?
That, that has been our life for the last 30 years.
Understood. And, and what's your ballpark shortage of drivers right now?
We, it's about 29.
Okay.
We are back where it's manageable, much like other agencies across the nation, we were short a lot of drivers, but we have made that up.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks to close us out, or at least me. So I'm, I'm reading the tea leaves here and I feel like there doesn't seem to be an appetite to move forward, right, as of today, but there are some timelines that we have to, I guess, kind of follow in order to put this on the ballot. So if we take a vote today and we don't want to move forward with the advertising of the public hearing, we wouldn't need to have, Commissioner Wilson, I'm sorry, Commissioner Moore wouldn't need to have her meeting at all, right, because it'd be a moot point, am I correct?
It'd be her choice if she wanted to have a meeting or not.
Okay. But we wouldn't be able to put it on the ballot if we don't advertise today.
The fellow would break a heart.
Correct. If you chose not to proceed with the public hearing today, then the opportunity to put anything on the ballot in 2024 for the voters would no longer be available.
All right. Thank you, Byron, for the answering my question. Mayor, I don't have any additional questions, I do just, just have a comment overall. I'm always of the mindset of better to have it and not need it than to need it and not have it. Byron, feel free to chime in if I say this wrong. Even if we advance the public hearing to be advertised for the 23rd so that we can continue the conversation, it does not obligate us, it isn't a guarantee it's going to be on the ballot, because the final decision would have to be made on the 23rd, am I correct?
Correct.
I think, well, I know some of my colleagues have some challenges with this. I think on our end at least, I think it makes sense to at least advertise at the full penny so that we can have the option to have the discussion. Commissioner Moore can certainly have her meeting. And, and then I think on the county administration's side, to also include Links, I think it would be prudent to have some additional meetings in terms of projects and and priority of those projects so that, you know, at least in the next, you know, couple of weeks, we can have conversations. And maybe those conversations change our perspectives, any one of my colleagues who have concerns, to maybe move forward with a sales tax in any amount, but I think at least it makes sense to at least preserve the option.
What is up there?
Because again, we, we, we move forward, say we're going to place it on the ballot, we have a meeting on 23rd and decide not to, but I think it, it makes sense. I mean, we've already had now two meetings here, we've had these community meetings and so I think it just makes sense, given the time invested, to at least continue the conversation, see if county staff can bring some additional information, maybe your position does not change, but I think it makes sense to at least continue the conversation. So that's where I'm at, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, they're still in the morning.
Commissioner Moore, I'm going to ask you a question. Listen, I think we've had plenty of conversation about it and I'm okay with suspending this effort until 2026, so I move motion to suspend until 2026. In the interim, we as a board, whoever's on the board can have workshops, we can lead into it, but because I think realistically, given the complexities of the issues that you have brought up, we can't get that done by the 23rd, okay? Just, just realistically with the complexities. But from the beginning, I wanted to at least have the conversation because of so many people in our community wanted us to have the conversation, they wanted to give input, we certainly have made the noble attempt to do that, but in order to, to have the meaningful dialogue and have an appropriate vote and the buy-in that we need going forward to not have failure at the ballot box, you know, I just don't think we can get there. So my motion is to suspend these efforts at this time.
Second, Wilson.
Oh, Commissioner.
Commissioner Uribe?
Byron, I just have a quick question. Is there a cost to the county to put a measure like what Miami Dade is doing about public transit on the ballot as a, without a price associated, but actually a question where, because I mean, we, we talked about all this data, but really, it was only about 1% of the residents who live in Orange County. If we actually did, and this is a presidential, you know, election, could we actually put a ballot effort where we pose a question and is there a cost to it?
Talking about a straw ballot?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
There used to be a provision in statute for an ability to do that. I'm not sure whether that provision is still there because I.
Miami Dade's doing it.
Yeah, well.
They have their existing source. I think their deal is related to the existing source, they already have that.
They're on public transit.
So I think it's more about, you know, hey, do you want us to do a little bit more, do something different with the existing source? Theirs is not related to a new, new source.
And I never base things on what Miami Dade does because they're more of a constitutional entity than they are a charter entity, even though, and their, their powers emanate primarily from the Constitution. So we can look at that issue and give you an answer with respect to.
We can do that. If we're not voting on a transportation infrastructure sales tax, we could likely do a straw poll between now and then. We can only, this particular issue can only be advanced to the ballot during the general election, 2024, 2026. What I'm simply saying is, we don't have the bandwidth, the runway in front of us to do all of what is being suggested. We, we've had the dialogue, so my motion is to suspend it in 2026. Is there a second?
You did, and I just had a follow-up question.
Second, we're all like seconded.
They, they, a bunch of them seconded it.
Okay.
And my last question.
I'm not sure, wait, just a moment.
I have seconded.
Okay, there's a second by Commissioner Moore.
And my, my last question is for Byron, can we look at the I Drive CRA when it comes to funding for transportation? Can we get a session on that? Because I think that's, even if we go to 26 or whatever, I think it's important.
We can look at all of that in the future.
Yeah.
We don't have to make that decision today.
I just want to ask about it.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. Motion passes and it is unanimous. All right, thank you all very much, thank you to the listening audience. We're going to catch, try to catch up here, sorry to the rest of the audience.